Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 P.M. And the October 10th regular council meeting will come to order. This meeting should have occurred on October 3rd, but was delayed to give the city and citizens time to reverse all the preparations that remain in line with a possible hurricane. Before we begin, please join me in a moment of silence for all those who lost their lives, their loved ones, their pets, or their homes due to hurricane beating. Thank you. I now rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to testify, United States of America, to the word of God, which is standing in one nation, under God, in the dismal delivery of Jesus Christ.
Mr. Chairman, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Otero.
Here.
Councilmember Roy Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Sable.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lynn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Interim City Manager Kyle Wiegler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Moore.
Present.
Thank you, Patty. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion is made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Otero. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Jody Shirley. Please make it known that Jody Shirley opposes.
I would like to consider adding an opportunity to discuss the city manager position. It's kind of been left out on the agenda. It's a final open on the ECU.
Are you making a motion to amend the agenda?
I am.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's kind of out of procedure the way we did it, but I will allow it. All in favor to amend the agenda as suggested?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we'll move forward with the amended agenda. What we'll do is we'll add item number 20. Let's see here. We will move that to item number 24. And then we will move unfinished business to 25 and 26. We'll leave the council comments. So we're just going to call the agenda item number 24, the discussion of city manager search. That work for you, Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mayor, it does.
All right, please. All right, we're on to item number two, which is citizen comments. Any citizen would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda? Please raise your hand and wait for your call. We have to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Would anyone like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Please go up to the podium and give us your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Randy Leavitt, 13th Street. First of all, I'd like to say kudos to Mike Sable. In all my years of following politics locally, he's the most proactive local official I've ever seen between the newsletters, emails, office hours, everything else. I mean, it's just terrific. I mean, we have access now, direct access constantly that we can get in touch with our community leaders, okay? I think you've given everyone something to aspire to. I really say thank you. Getting to the points, I want to bring up, a few years ago, a couple of years, two, three years ago, I came here and I complained about the benches on 12th Street access, okay? We used to have six. Then they upgraded the benches with these new resin benches. They're nice, but we went down to three, okay? And they put a garbage can right where one of the benches was on the left-hand side. And they built a big sand dune up on the left-hand side towards the shower. So really, if you want to go with your wife or somebody and sit on the bench, you're going to be looking through a hunk of sand with weeds, okay? We need, we need more benches up there. Some nights it's very crowded and we end up standing, you know, behind the benches and everything. I don't know why you can't get three, three more benches up there. And I brought it up at that time. There's six benches sitting out here. I never see anybody on the, on the side rail here. So steal three of these and put them up there if it costs too much, okay? You need a bike rack or something up there. Perhaps in the furory first space on the right-hand side, pull a bike rack. People come biking up to the easement and they take their bikes and they chain them to the back of the benches with a handlebar sticking over into the bench area. So of the three that are there and the two of them you can only see, you can't really half the time sit there because there's bicycles leaning up against it. Maybe there should be something to do with a simple bike rack that would help. Okay? Two, three years ago, I came to a meeting and there was a big presentation here about adding one of these, I guess, ad for war on taxes or something. And the fire department from Indian Rocks Beach was here en masse and the chief was here and they made this big spiel about, you know, instead of, to help us out with paramedics and whatever over on our side, instead of taking 10 or 15 minutes to dispatch somebody from Indian Rocks Beach and bring them up here, you know, they were going to raise our taxes and they were going to buy this building on the corner down here. Every time I go by there, all I see is Hispanic guys there loading grass and weeds and stuff in the back of trailers. It looks like there's a running lawn service out of there. I really want to know, did we ever buy that building? Was that building ever bought as a, it was only a substation, I think they called it. The big spiel was if you get a heart attack on 13th or 14th, they're a minute away instead of coming all the way from Indian Rocks Beach. So they raised our taxes and I don't see any, any fruits of our investment. Did any, what happened with that building? Did we, did we ever buy that building?
Thank you, Mr. Leavitt. We generally do not respond directly to citizen comments. This will give us time to think about your question.
Okay, that's fine.
Or anti, anti, anti.
That's fine. Okay.
My other, I'm sorry, sir, you're out of time. Thank you very much.
That's it?
We have one more.
Okay. They're doing it again, okay? They're doing it again. You should be aware of that. Raise the taxes and we're not going to get any of the other.
All right, you know, we're on to item number three, which is law enforcement report from Nelson Camp.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, citizens. Deputy Steve Clacker for the record. First off, I want to apologize. I do not have a report for the sheriff's office activity. I thought there was going to be a sergeant here this evening, but I will double check on that and get it back to you all. As far as code enforcement, again, another busy month, keeping busy with a lot of violations. And the nice thing is that people are now really complying in a shorter period of time getting things completed. One of the other things that Kyle's going to be bringing up, we met with Commissioner Roberts, my supervisor Sergeant Jason Stibber, Laura, myself, for a little meeting dealing with the code enforcement issues. I think it went very well. I think Kyle is going to speak about that later on this evening. Other than that, everything's going well. I will tell you that my, my messages on my phone have pretty much stopped, so evidently we must be doing something out there correctly because we're not getting any, too many complaints out there. So that's my report and I'll stand for any questions.
Nelson?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
How's it going tonight?
Good, how are you?
I looked at the monthly code enforcement report. Six out of 28 go on the ground. 21% of them reference ordinance 22-72.
Okay.
Typically in a long view event and there's no explanation there. I had to order codes and look it up to see if there's any. Just for the application of the ability in our audience and the council, could you just specify what that is and why the focus and what you're seeing that basically?
Yes, that deals with mainly landscaping, brush, trees. And I get a, again, we have a lot of vacant lots here that are overgrown. So what I will do is I'll get with either Laura or Kyle and find out who the property owner is and then we'll, we'll make a notification to them, have those, those issues taken care of. Even though they're done pretty quickly. We do have a couple of issues. One is out on, I believe it's 6th Street where there's a house that is vacant. It's in probate. The homeowner had passed and trying to get ahold of somebody in the family to take care of some vegetation, mainly trees growing over on to the properties next door to that, that one location. And it does take a little bit of time because again, trying to get ahold of a contact or actually talk to a family member. In this particular case, I have left two messages with the daughter of the mom who owned that house and she hasn't returned my phone calls. So our next step is we're just going to show violation and then cite, cite the homeowner and then go from there. Other issues that we're seeing is the, I'll give you an example. Up on Donato, I have one house up there that has brush or bushes taller than your feet. Trying to get them, again, most of these people are out of state. Try to make contact either with the property manager or whoever's handling that property and try to take care of those, those issues. But all in all, it's been pretty successful and some of those, those complaints have been going over that.
Any other questions? Mike Sable?
Yeah, I'm, going back to hurricane. We had some power outages. How, I think it was what, 5th or 6th Street, we had some or, because there is a dandelion tree, probably the largest tree in Beller Beach, and basically has surrounded, encapsulated. Power lines going through there. That thing has to be cut, period. Coming from Maryland, you have to do proactive cutting. This tree has caused power outages before and it's got to be stopped. You've got to stop the tree before it does it again.
Right.
Do you know about this, this giant dandelion tree?
No, I do not, but I can look into it. But I will tell you with Duke Energy, there was one house up on 15th, we had the same problem where they cleared out a lot. The people that actually cleared the lot had to stop because they had to get a permit from Duke Energy before they proceed any further because of the, the actual tree is growing into the lines itself. And I will tell you that that's been going on for a month and it's still, from what I understand, the permit has not been approved by Duke Energy.
This one's got to be stopped. You've got that, plus you got line, power lines that are about 10 foot off the ground. I mean, I remember, I got photos on Sunday. So we've got to, got to get a game plan to adjust this for the residents whose power is, you know?
Is it in the easement? Will Duke Energy?
I don't know. We'll find out.
Because it'll come out and the whole set of the tree will terminate.
Yeah, because this one really got to be cut back. And then dandelion, you're talking at least 84. It's, it's huge.
Okay.
And I believe the property that's on has runners on it. You know, this will perplex me, but I'm sure we can do it.
Yeah, because there was one that, there was an Australian pine that we finally had laid out. That one we finally got to take out and that took a little bit of time.
You're a legend with that one, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
But yeah, we'll look into it, sir.
Appreciate it.
You said you had a tree removed?
Yes.
For what reason?
Uh, two reasons. Number one, there was a nuisance because those Australian pines, the needles come off. It was actually on a property owner's side and because of the needles that were falling, it was going through somebody else's screen through the pool. And she had that taken care of within about two weeks.
Well, I've been, excuse my French, bitching about an Australian or northern border pine for at least four months now on 8055 Harbor Drive. It's got to be at least, at least 80, 15 feet tall. And it has done damage to a neighbor's, uh, pool screen. Three neighbors have complained about it. One of them just moved. The mayor's been out on that site. It's leaning. There was an arborist down on that site. He said it's, it's, it's a catastrophe waiting to happen. I don't see any, any sighting or issue with that.
Okay, and what was the address on that?
I believe it's 805. It's a vacant lot. There was a house there. They tore the house down probably five years ago.
Councilmember? I'll address this. This is the 805 Harbor. So with the Australian pine, we acted on that immediately because it's on the noxious weed list with the state. So further code, it was a violation. I did speak with Duke Energy about the claim that they were going to remove that tree. That's not accurate. Apparently the resident called Duke Energy out to assess a tree that was in the easement behind their house and then made another report to assess that tree. But given that it's on private property, it's not something that they're trying to address. I did clarify that.
It's, it's Duke's not addressing.
It's Duke. So we kind of heard that there was a letter saying, at least you'll.
Having an artwork that's a nuisance tree citation or violate codes, and we can cite that note.
So the avenue that we discussed now is I'm getting a proposal to kind of do a hazardous tree sweep in the city, to be fair, and assess all the trees. You can see what we know.
Well, God, thank you for bypassing us on that storm a week ago. But that storm, when it came up here, that tree would have been in somebody's house.
Any other comments from the council? Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I did see we have someone from, from the sheriff's department. Are you prepared to address the council on report?
I'm sorry, I'm asking for your hand.
He's coming in, okay. All right, thank you very much. I'm sorry, we don't, we don't address, the citizens do not address the, the guest speakers.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and, all of a sudden, you, you received these reports. You're the first one to get the report. Yes, in the event that Sergeant wasn't here, would you be able to address the council on this report?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to get started and then we'll ask the board?
So this is the report that covers the month of August for law enforcement contract. Just going to summarize what we have reported here. As you can see, in the month of August, we have motor vehicle theft. I don't have any background now.
Okay. Sergeant, would you like to come up and address the council? We'd like to hear your report.
To me, it's not, I guess, what we're looking at. You want my copy?
No. Sorry for being late. Usually this meeting is on the first one, the other one. We also have an assignment with Beller Flubs in their city where I'm supposed to be there at 6 o'clock for a state play.
Okay.
So we'll.
We'll give you a pass this time.
Thank you very much, sir. For the August report for Beller Beach, there was one motor vehicle theft on the first page. There's no other UCR crime stats for that page. The second page, there is nine arrests or total fault charges on individuals in Beller Beach during the month of August. On the third page, there is 940 events requiring 1,070 deputy units responding to those events. The final page, there is one crash during the month of August in your city and a combination of 214 citations and warrant issue.
Thank you. I'm curious about the auto theft. Did this person leave their keys in their car?
I'm going to have to look that up and get back to you. I didn't know about this meeting until this short.
Okay. Council, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next we have a presentation from the Florida Legisities. Councilmember, councilmembers Jody Shirley and Mike Sable, please join me on the floor. On behalf of the Florida Legisities, I am pleased to award to you the certificate for completion of the institute of the light municipal officials, too. And that happened in Fort Myers on September 16th and 17th, 2022. First, Councilmember Jody Shirley. Next, Councilmember Mike Sable. I will add that that is, that is the second class of floor available and very proud of the floor. Child open. All right, we are on to item number five, that is the quarterly board reports. We have a report from the Board of Adjustments. Please go up and state your name and let's hear it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mike Kelly. I'm the chairman of the Board of Adjustment and I got three quick things to talk about this past quarter. We had a resignation from the board in May, in the May and you folks replaced that person. So we are now a full board of seven. You replaced him in David Gardella in the month of July. The month of August, we had a hearing. A member of the board who accused himself that was the applicant on Donato Drive had to bring up, we had to come before us for variance regarding what we all consider a bad ordinance, a bad code. The board, the actual issue regarding the height of a swimming pool above the crown of the road. Jody, you and I and several other people talked about this not long enough when we did code revision a couple of years ago, and we want to bring it back to council. But it goes work session first. It's an issue that could bring other people into requirement for the variance on forthcoming pools. Third issue, it's coming up Thursday, we have a hearing. We're going to be helping out the interim city manager with an issue where a person has appealed one of his decisions. So we have administrative hearing coming up, not for variance, literally for an appeal. So that's it, the Court of Adjustment this quarter.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Counsel, any questions? Comments? Vice Mayor?
Just for your audience, could you just quickly review what the appeal was for?
Yeah, the person wants to tear down an existing home on 22nd Street and put up a three-story home, which is not permitted in our city. It's even written in the actual ordinance that you can't even ask for variance for that. And the interim city manager has made, made a decision and presumably Kyle, the man, has asked, where do I go from here? And we are going to hear his case on Thursday night.
The issue is that the structure has, is proposing three habitable floors.
Where were that two above, above garage or adjacent to a garage, but not three? Wants 55-foot tall home that's three stories, habitable floors.
I'm curious, new homes, two, okay, two stories is the limit. New homes, you build a garage, you're allowed to build habitable, a story on the ground? We're still allowed to do that?
It's written above the garage.
Yeah, you have to be above the BFD. Or you, you know, so you can have a garage, you have two habitable floors above it. You can also have two habitable floors adjacent if you're above the BFD. Mayor, does this, a board member is going to be at the hearing on Thursday and to preserve the integrity of that process, I request that we not get into any more depth discussing the particular reason code. Thank you very much.
Can I ask just one question on the pool theory? What was the outcome of that?
The variance was granted. This particular code was written and revised in 2014. At the time of that revision, there was a lot of controversy about it. I remember physically being here with our city engineer and with the mayor at that time who stimulated that he even wanted it, 18 inches above the crown of the road, which we all thought was wrong, should have been higher. And the way it's written, any new pool, especially in these new homes that are being built, these pools are going to be built way higher than 18 inches above the crown of the road. And every single case will have to be reviewed at the city level upon the manager, city manager. And we think that council should look at it, we should all discuss it again, because when you and I were on that code, we skipped over. We talked about it, but we didn't have enough discussion at that time.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. All right, next up is the Citizen Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mayor Rod Sigany. We own it once this month. We've been on September 21st to discuss potential need for a life credit for emergency management purposes. The committee agreed to follow up and do some homework regarding that. So interim city manager, we've heard I have been talking with the last base that we did some bond issues with, as well as the last bond council, so gathering costs, fees, and options. So that's where we are, that we can be, the committee, further discussion.
Great. Counsel? Thank you very much, Mr. Sigany. All right, do we have a report from Parks and Recreation?
Okay, so this is our quick recap from July, August, and September.
Can I teach you the policy?
Sure.
Give us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tammy Lavenda, Parks and Recreation Chair.
All right, Tammy. One more second, one more second. Kyle, do we need to take a break?
Yeah, we're going to get it working.
This will, this will, I'm going to get you to hold on. Let's take five minutes, all right? Patty, please make a note that we returned at 6:30 P.M. And now we are, now we are back online and let's call Parks and Recreation.
Tammy Lavenda, Parks and Recreation Chair. Hi, everyone. So here's the Parks and Recreation quarterly board report, the recap from July, August, and September. We had three successful and well-attended beach cleanups. Thank you to everybody that helped out. During this last quarter, we had lots of prep work for upcoming events and I'm just going to recap those. And if you need more information, you can look at the city website. But the Halloween costume contest is Sunday, October 30th from 4:00 to 6:00 P.M. Please join us, kids, grandkids, and your married family members. $100 Amazon first prize, 75 for second prize, and 50 for third prize in both the kids and the pets respectively. We have several residents, most that are in this room right now, that would like to do a trick or treat rather than donate candy. So please let me know if you're interested and the kids will love it. And this is our only event that's weather permitting. So if it's raining, thunder, lightning, unfortunately, we have to cancel this event because we cannot bring this one inside. November 19th is our chili cook-off. We are currently selling tickets and taking entry forms. There are entry forms on the table where you picked up the meeting agenda. Non-parishual food items can be dropped in the box in the lobby at City Hall. The Holiday Social and Christmas Tree Lighting is on December fifth from five to six P.M. We will be doing a charity toy drive at the event this year. If you cannot attend, there will be a box in the lobby where you can drop your unwrapped toy donation. There will also be new Beller Beach logoed items for sale at this event in time for Christmas. And then last but not least, the Health and Wellness Fair is January fourteenth from ten A.M. to two P.M. The third thing that we worked on this last quarter, I kind of call it our areas of need checklist, was put together by our board member surveys of our Parks and Rec, Parks and Beach accesses. And this continues to be reviewed and updated, and thank you to the city staff for all their help in getting this done. The fourth item that we will review is the easement survey questions procedure and example. You guys all have rough draft number one in front of you in your packet. So I know you tasked the Parks and Rec Board at a work session to try to get feelers out in the city, and Kyle and I met on this, and we were thinking the best way to do it, to get a well-rounded survey, is to hang door surveys at everyone's house. That way, we're not interrupting them, we're not knocking on doors, we're not mailing something, and then if they truly want their opinion to be known, they will definitely answer the survey. So they can drop it off at City Hall during business hours, or they can drop it in the mail slot in the back black box by the entryway near the parking lot. So what I'd like to do is, just briefly, I don't know if you guys got a chance to read this yet, but I want to make sure that all of the council agrees that these questions are clear and succinct, and that you think that we're going to get a well-rounded survey, because we don't want to pass off the survey and then have it, you know, these weren't good questions, or I'd rather have your sample approval before we do it, and then you guys are all happy, and it's just the results are what they are. So it's just four questions. Number one, are you aware of a ten-foot grass easement that runs from Second Street to Eighteenth Street in Beller Beach? You will be shocked at how many people do not know that it exists. Would you be interested in the city paving the easement at a cost of two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Oh, these are all yes, no. Number three, if no, would you like to see the easement improved by some other means? For example, shell, geocell, ground grizz, et cetera? Yes or no? Number four, would you like to see the easement left as is? Yes or no? And then there's a comment section, and like, just if you're talking to people about this in general, people bring up things all the time that like, I never thought of, so I thought it would be a good idea if they could just put a one or two liner, especially if they feel very strongly about it, but they don't particularly want to come to a council meeting, it's a way for them to do something other than yes, no. And then just their address, so, you know. And then if we wanted to get an address, not switch your name, but an address so we make sure that we don't have DPO kits. So they just have to put ninety-seven Harvard Drive, and then, and then at the, oh, and then it has instructions at the bottom. Please submit your survey for December thirty-first at the Beller Beach Community Center. After hours, submit through the marked outgoing mail slot on the back pedestal mailbox at the back, at the back entrance of the building. Thank you, Beller Beach, Parks and Rec Board, and the city of Beller Beach. And then at the bottom of that, I did a little perforated line, because of course we've got to get our, our info in, which is some save-the-dates that they can cut off the bottom. I figured if we're walking door-to-door for every single residence, I would like for like, to get a little info about our events. So anyway, I would love your input, and if you don't want to do it right now, maybe you can email Kyle, or text me, or email me, but what do you guys think so far?
Council, Frank Baker.
Is there any way we can do electronic ballot through our website?
We only hit about three hundred people, so we can, but we talked about that, we don't hit nearly enough people.
Well, we have that sign now. We can put it on the sign now about easements, because I agree with you, a lot of people don't even know that easements exist.
Right. We talked about putting it on the sign, we talked about putting it on the city website, we just don't hit enough people. I mean, we could do it at the beach cleanup, we could assign, you know, randomly, we could stamp, say it out on the bridge, but then there's no way to ensure that we don't have DPO kits, there's no way to ensure that we get a good, like, you know, if you go in specific sections of the city, you can get all yeses or all nos, and that's what I wanted to avoid. I wanted it to be like, a good representation of the entire city if we could get it. And believe me, I would love to do this electronically. We don't particularly want to go door-to-door and hang these. I mean, it's not something that we typically do, but you guys task us with this, and we want to do a good job, and we want to get all the information that we can.
Councilmember Zabel.
Yeah, I really like what you've done here, and tell you what, behind this, I got a list of, I send out an email to over six hundred and eleven people about every two weeks, you know, through the hurricane, et cetera, but I'll send out your surveys to them.
Mike Zabel. Have you considered possibly taking a survey or polling at your events?
We can, but you know, typically, we have twenty people. If we have like, fifty to a hundred, the kids, you know what I mean, it'll just be the parents at the Halloween event. We, we're not sure of the numbers of the Chili Cook-Off, we're hoping it's very well-attended, but we just don't know. We can, but then we have to make sure that we don't do DPO kits if we do the hangers on the door. So if you guys don't like the hangers on the door, if Mike Zabel's email list can hit six hundred and eleven residents, it's more, it's a bigger number than I've heard in the past with the constant contacts, like, the three, whatever it was, was the last update I've had, but that's about, what, is that half the residents, or?
Three, three hundred something?
Or yours?
No, my, yeah, mine's at least, yeah, it's six, eleven.
Yeah, yours, huh?
Yeah, no, I counted mine today, six, eleven.
And there are no DPO kits, like, the husband, the wife, on separate emails or anything like that?
That's something you really can't tell, because of everybody's behind @hotmail.com, you know, good luck. But I would say the majority of those are, you know, not attached anywhere.
Not tubes?
Yeah.
It's up to you guys. I mean, door-to-door, we're going to have to enlist as many volunteers as we can, because Parks and Rec Board, it will take a month for us to hit every single house walking up and down. We're going to kind of do it like the swokes do with the flags, and try to get that many and sign everybody two or three streets, and then it'll go in like, twenty minutes.
This will, I don't think that there's a single council member here who hasn't hung something on the door. So you're like, plenty of volunteers in this group.
Okay. Are you guys good with the questions? Do you think it's a fair, and like, or will it get a, I didn't want leading questions.
No, it's very good respect, and you got the notes section, and you got the average to eliminate the good subway.
Floyd Roberts.
The only thing I was thinking about, as one of those people that really didn't know there was an easement there, would there be any value, you think, in letting the people know on the door hanger as to what some of our citizens use that easement for? You know, it may help them to think, well, why would we want to pay two hundred thousand dollars to improve it? Not that I would be in favor of that, but just something that you guys are probably way more aware of, and I'm sure it's used for jogging, bicycling, football games, whatever people are using that easement for. If we could maybe list that and say, well, here's some of the things the easement has currently been used for by our citizens. Give any.
Well, I, this is just my opinion, and we've kind of talked about it a little bit, but I think that's kind of leading, because like, on the flip side, I could also list, well, leaving it as it is now, it's the only place where I can walk my dog, where they won't put their paws when it's a hundred and ten degrees out, and it's on the concrete or, well, we don't have sidewalks, but you're not walking them on the street. So if I listed all the, the good things for having it, I would have to list all the good things for not having it. Does that make sense?
It does.
At least in my head, like, so, I felt like if I, we, the first list of questions that I wrote, some of them I felt were kind of leading, like, so whoever's writing the survey, their opinion should not be known in the survey. And I feel like if we put all of the things that it would be good for, then we're being leading. It's just my opinion.
May I just add, that, though, just to your point, nowhere on here does it say it's a walking easement, and clearly, it's a walking easement, and it's been called that through the city for years.
Oh, you know that.
Yeah, so, back to your point, because it just sounds like we just have an easement of some sort that randomly runs through the city.
Yeah, I'll put that in the title, like, walking easement survey.
Yeah, another, another suggestion might be, obviously, there's blank space on the back, might be a map of where it's at. Certainly, I think the most vocal people are going to be the people that are most impacted, but everyone needs to be aware, if they're not aware of the easement, where's it at?
Yeah, that's a good idea. We can do that.
Show the entirety of it. So you're lying, you can focus on it, but easement portion, which I consider, right? I'd show the entirety of it, because people are oblivious to it.
A lot of people don't know it's there, if they don't live near it, or even, I know people that live on, like, the streets that they have it.
Yeah, if you're updated, you have my email and phone number, just call me, shoot it over, and then I can send it when you're ready.
Well, do you think that we should do both? So people have the option to either email it back in through you, or drop it off at the city, because then they will definitely, the people that you have six hundred will get it twice, because we don't know, like, a direct, a.
No, absolutely, you can let them know too, you know, maybe on your door, et cetera, but please, you know, vote regardless, and then shoot it, you can drop it by.
Yeah, I think that's great. Yeah, it's hard, because if, if they work during the day, I mean, they can drop it off in the mail slot, but honestly, I had no clue where that mailbox was when I'd been here.
Yeah, we're going to work for the hurricane, but when I sent out those emails, that should work very well for this purpose.
Any comments from the council?
That number, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand, is that a pretty conservative number? Because that's like, twelve thousand dollars a block.
You know, that's just the last number I heard, and I could put four, I could put a bigger number, I just put, I mean, I could put whatever number you guys want me to put in there.
It's more on the conservative side, I just wanted to make sure that we're having an accurate number to cover the cost.
Yeah, I'm just saying, oil's up another ten dollars a barrel a week, blacktop as well.
Yeah. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
So we're good to proceed with this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, I have two more things. Okay, number five, as the Beller Beach Community Foundation Board has been working on the nonprofit launch, we have been discussing giving our input to the interim city manager, Kyle Reefler, on the group program discussed later in the agenda. We spent quite a bit of time on that in the last two months of meetings. And I would just like to say a quick thank you to Kyle Reefler for both the Parks and Rec Board and the Beller Beach Community Foundation for his time and attention with everything we're trying to accomplish. He could have very understandably told us that he didn't have time, as he is doing two jobs and managing so many managers that are higher on the priority list. He is doing an outstanding job, and we very appreciate everything he's doing for our city. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions for me?
I have a question.
Jody Sherrill.
Just, we have a citizen talking about benches needed at, at Mindy Beach Access. I'm not sure if we're able to place benches, but would that be something maybe the foundation could look into, selling benches and having them placed where needed throughout the city, and see if, if we can place them on the beach access?
Yes, all of that's on there. So there'll be benches, bike racks, and when he was speaking, I thought, you know, the official launch of the foundation will be in the November city council meeting, so we'll have a table at the Halloween event, we're going to have a table at, and we're going to be participating, and the Chili Cook-Off will be sponsoring the dessert table, and we're going to be doing the raffle. So yes, absolutely. So that's the thing, we could have launched a month ago, but we've been working on the website to make sure we get as many programs like that as possible. And then that's some of the things that we've been working on with Kyle, to make sure that the city is up to standards on everything that you guys have already approved. So, but for sure, more information on it next.
Anything else?
No, I'm good if you guys aren't.
Council? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and this quarter, we did not have a report on planning and zoning. All right, item six, City Attorney's Report. Mr. Mora, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been quite a busy month this last month. We've worked with the interim manager on a number of matters, and many of which are on the agenda this evening. One of the things that you should expect, a follow-up to our last meeting, I do have almost a complete draft of the proposed sign code before I circulated to you, I have an opportunity to speak to interim manager about his content format, make sure it aligns with the general aim of the community before I circulate it, and if there's any particulars that can be taken into account and resolved on the front end, especially with the realities on the ground. Otherwise, excuse me, this community did, I think, an excellent job in preparing and responding to the hurricane preparedness. I will tell you, you know, for the benefit of the residents, both the manager and the mayor were in contact with me immediately Monday morning, following the county's declaration of emergency on the Saturday, so that we were prepared to mobilize any necessary resolutions, resources, and otherwise, so, just, well done on that. Otherwise, I have nothing to add, but I am happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Council? Mike Zabel.
Yes, Mr. Mora, have you been able to take a look at that email disclaimer suggestion I brought up to you? You put it on all of our city emails.
Yes, I have. I, I will tell you that I'm trying to balance, as each of you are committed public servants, and I'm also mindful of a lot of the direction you gave me as I started this position on doing work for the collective as opposed to individuals. I did receive your request, I did, I did forward draft options to interim manager Reefler. He and I, as we discussed it, he suggested, depending on the bevy of things that were being put on the agenda tonight, that maybe that would be something that would be addressed tonight, but I do have options, I'm prepared to speak to that if that is the will of the body. To that same end, the last meeting, and I would have addressed it in my report, but I want to make sure, since it has been added as an agenda item, I have had some contacts with the senior advisory program, and can substantively update when we get to that agenda item that has been added.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Thank you very much, Mr. Mora. Thank you. Item seven, interim city manager report. Mr. Reefler?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Started off, we got the twelfth and thirteenth street project. That was scheduled to start on September twenty-sixth. Hurricane Ian put us back a week, and actually started October third. Since breaking around and getting down to some of the actual utilities, we've discovered some, some utility conflicts. And so we are, we're working around a couple laterals. We've discovered a four-inch water main. If you remember the video camera on the twelfth street, there was a pipe that was going through the RCP, and that turned out to be a water main. We initially thought it was sewer lateral, but, so, there's a workaround offset line item in the, in the contract, which we can utilize to get around that. One thing that was not in the contract is, we can't work around, can't offset the sewer line, four-inch pipe that's directly behind that. In this case, we're going to have to get, which stages we're working on, a proposal from the contractor to have a change word for the conflict lots. So I hope to have that put together this week and to address, not sure if we're going to schedule a work session next Monday, but hopefully, a special meeting to address that. Another thing that we ran into is, we discovered on the north side, twelfth street, between the easternmost inlet, there is pipe that did not, the surveyors didn't pick up. So we discovered a hundred twelve feet of fifteen-inch RCP. When it was discovered, I got the camera crew in there to analyze the pipe, because I knew if it's something we're going to add to our line item, fifteen-inch RCP, that we wanted the addition of it. between the easternmost inlets, there is pipe that did not, the surveyors didn't dig up. So we discovered a 112 feet of 15-inch RCP. Um, when it was discovered, I got the camera crew in there to analyze the pipe, because I knew if it's something we're going to add to our line item, uh, 15-inch RCP, that we wanted the addition of it. Um, we did go in there, had the camera footage and report, um, which I'll send all you to view, but it was very much so, um, probably even worse than the rest of the RCP. But just so you can see it with your own eyes, did send it to the engineering firm, they recommended that it gets replaced. Um, in that case, it's going to be a 112-foot overrun, uh, which we go up a line item for, which is a $120 per regular foot. So at that cost, I'm looking at, um, about 13, 13 and a half thousand additional 15-inch RCP, which that will come out of our 10% built-in contingencies, which it is at 65,000. So just to kind of keep in mind, that's what we're dealing with on that project. Um, I will have all these numbers, um, to present to you on the change order, which should hopefully be next Monday, especially. Uh, as far as the Gulf Boulevard underground project, uh, currently, utility consultants in Florida are out there, uh, just for preliminary, um, conversations with the residents on Gulf Boulevard for, for, but now Gulf Boulevard, Duke Energy is requiring easements for the transformers, uh, for the undergrounding to take place. So it's a 10-by-10-foot easement. Um, again, utility consultants are providing residents preliminary information. They don't have legal contracts at this point, but we are giving them, um, information and providing pictures, um, to give them an idea of what they're expecting to come. Um, the 7th Street and 16th Street seawall and 7th Street O-Rap renovation project, that has been moving nicely now that we got started, and we received that permit from the county right now. So they are driving aisle sheet piling and, and setting anchors at both sites. And, uh, in having a meeting with contractor and the engineer assigned, um, they are actually going to work with us and pull out the check valve that we recently replaced, uh, at 7th Street. When they extend that pipe out, they're going to fit it in, um, and actually build that extension over that valve itself. So it'll be a nice tight fit. Um, they're going to do the same at the 16th Street seawall, um, which we did not have a valve in at that place. So after this project, we will have to have a replacement, we'll be doing it for us when we're done nicely. Uh, as far as the 17th and 18th Street stormwater project, um, still in the design phase. I did receive a proposal from dual associates. Um, recently, we've had resident inquiry into the stormwater timeline. It inspired me to kind of update it and show everybody where we're at. That's why I sent that out to you, just to give you an idea of a little bit of history of, of projects that have taken place and where the budgets were adjusted and where we're at now. Um, I contacted Monty Gack with the Citizens Advisor Committee about, um, that timeline, and I want to discuss further, because as part of what they were charged with is looking at options into flooding projects, possibly lines of flooding. We think it's long for the city, um, wanted to kind of get his opinion of, of possible options for moving along in our capital projects, the stormwater projects. Uh, we plan on meeting this week. And, uh, just as a, as a start, if you look at that timeline, we're, we're funded, uh, not only for 17th and 18th Street, but also for the next project, which is going to be 19th, 20th, and 9th Street. So the, the funding is actually in there, in budget, and, um, I'm feeling, I already started talking to dual associates at some of the under-engineering forums, because I'd like to get some competitive pricing. Uh, already talking about, giving us a proposal for the first project and the proposal for two projects, just to see if we're wrapped with that. Our code enforcement analysis project, we got it September 6th. Uh, it went very well. I think we were in there for probably 30 hours, if I remember correctly. And we got a lot of insight, uh, from Steve's, uh, quote-unquote, Steve Pluckus Sergeant, um, Sergeant Sticker. Uh, it's the first time I met him, and he was actually, he gives a lot of insight. He's got a lot of background in community policing, um, and he was very helpful at that meeting. So from that meeting, we talked a lot about things and how to code enforce a lot of challenges that are faced to different communities. And we thought our next step was going to be to feel out our residents. And since then, we're going to put together a, a survey that we're planning on sending out this week via the constant contact. Um, I've got a couple more tweaks I'd like to make to it, um, for functionality, but send that out with a deadline for the end of the month, to get some, some solid feedback on, uh, what's important to the residents. And hopefully, maybe identify the different geologic, geographical areas of the city and, and see where, maybe what's important in one area differs from another. And then from there, we're going to begin meeting and talk strategy and how we're going to reach what, uh, meeting the goals of, or meeting the expectations of residents, should say. Um, the City Hall seawall, seawall project, I, now that we have the funding, the budget, I said we had the, um, $30,000 that's in the capital projects fund. I want to go out back out and get preliminary estimate, and I think I'm going to try to enterprise a rate of the, um, seawall there, Bella Isle, um, to just kind of feel around if we're, if we're in the correct ballpark before going out to bid. Just to make sure, you know, if it's going to come back higher, um, kind of reassessing what we're going to be able to go out and bid with the numbers here. Um, children's playground, still in back order. Uh, some other projects that we have coming up, we, uh, with the Steve Pluckes here, we have the new admin assistant. I am in the process of taking old admin assistant, uh, job descriptions and coming up with our current description of what we're going to use and advertise. Uh, another project that is fully funded as of October 1st is the community center generator. Um, I would, I'm going to check back with that contractor and make sure the numbers are still online, but I'd also like to bring this, um, as an overall emergency management, um, item at a work session to consider some of the needs we have as a city for emergency management, and see if, if it's money best spent on this backup generator, or if there's something that is more beneficial to our residents, our needs for an emergency, um, and we could possibly use that money for it. And I believe that goes every way.
Counselor? Mike Baker?
First of all, Kyle, to mention on the excellent job you did preparing the city for the storm. Uh, people saying you're doing two jobs. This man actually was doing three jobs the last two days. He was physically filling sandbags, loading people's cars. Uh, we are so blessed with the staff that we have, including this woman right there, and the women that work in that office. Um, I really believe all you deserve a bonus for giving up Sundays. Uh, last year, he gave up July through the weekend. Our field staff doesn't live here. Um, so a lot of them just called in sick and said, you know, I got my own house to prepare. But they didn't. They, they came here, they did an excellent job. I was here, I guess, till 6:30, uh, Monday night, didn't look good. And everybody got sandbagged, we had plenty of sand left. Um, I think when we left, I think, uh, we still had like 15 bags filled, ready to go. But, um, did I hear you correctly that there's a 112-feet reinforced concrete pipe on that project over there that did come up on the original survey? Correct. And that, that job just got, I think, I think we voted for three to pass that, that demand due Mr. Mayor, because he pushed it ahead. I'm never into patching, uh, construction sites. Um, 80-year-old plates need to be replaced. Um, is there any chance on that 7th Street valve, when you go in there, can you raise that about six inches low foot? Or would that just throw off the whole, um, flow? You know, the, um, criteria of the flow on that? Because that valve is too low right now, and there's still water comes into the street, it does close.
I understand that. I, I believe that would be a completely, at this point, changes still of the project. I could, I could ask an engineer, maybe, and all that.
I don't know about the integrity of the other pipe, that would be, you know, compromised or not, but, um, it would be, it would be beneficial for the good reason. And there was an email sent out on October 4th by a resident about a sign on the beach that Torridus DeMar Properties, uh, if you got it, did get up. And, um, they said it was on the public beach portion, no trespassing sign. I, I'm, I'm a little bit wary of any signs on beaches. Um, there's two down at 28th, through First Street, Bella Shores. Get a good windstorm, who knows where they're going. Do they have to be permitted by the county?
That is the state's territory.
State's territory?
Okay, so when I, when I first was aware of that sign, I contacted the FDPE, and they told me it was, it was allowed per their standards.
It was allowed as a signal plus sign.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Two, two things. The first one is, you talked about the emergency generator. So take 30 seconds here, set the stage for what's alternative, what is taken.
Some of the things I've been looking at is, um, our sandbagging procedures. Where this last storm really tested us, um, we had to put out more sandbags in a shorter, shorter amount of time than we ever had since I've been here or ever heard of, you know, in the history of our sandbag station. Uh, we went through about 5,000 bags in a matter of two days. And, um, it seemed like, you know, we were backed up, we tried to regulate the traffic. Uh, but it would definitely be something to improve on. Uh, finding better means, and I did some research on, they, they do make a, a sandbag manufacturer of tools, and they also make attachments to, uh, that where they fit on our tractor, to make 20 sandbags at a time. Um, I think this is something that we should look into, the prices on them, or even the attachment being about $10,000, um, and then some, some really nice, um, sandbagging tools. Processing where you scoop a bucket and put the sand on the top, and it pretty much produces sandbags. Um, that, that runs a little bit higher, around 20, 25,000. But just options to consider, um, what works best for us. Another, uh, idea would just be, if we get a way to more easily make sandbags, uh, to, to build some kind of, uh, shed storage facility somewhere on property, um, where we can palletize sandbags and have them available for residents when we need it. And I think so many of our production levels and our ability to hand out sand, or, or access to hand out sandbags, when the demand is high, we, uh, might solve a lot of the problems that we're facing just at this last event.
Good thoughts. My, my second thing is, you guys have big projects in play here. You're doing a great job, you're running at 120% on a lot of these things. So my question is, you're wearing two hats right now, so, you know, my observation is, anything you can touch, you do it at 120%. You don't pack off on anything. You do anything, your max will focus. My concern is, you're trying to cover two jobs right now, you're playing this, you're on it over. Give me some idea of what your concerns are, that you're not capable of giving to your full attention. What are those things that could fall off the plate that you're concerned?
Thank you for asking. My, my primary concern would be my, um, my attention and supervision that I can give to the public work staff that's, uh, recently taking on the additional responsibilities. I feel like they, uh, they could use a little more of my time. I, I, I do try to communicate with them as, as much as I possibly can, but I would like to be more involved in some of the things that they're doing, and also, um, the training. I feel like, um, I could be doing more training with them, just having the, uh, the time to be dealing with them. I, um, it's just concerned that it's not, it's, it's, um, not sustainable over a long period of time. I mean, just, we're, we're getting by, um, and they're doing a great job, really picking up the slack in every way possible, and I commend them for that. They typically don't go out of their way to, to ask something, unless they have something important to eat, you know? Um, another concern of mine is just the overall, uh, project management. Um, we're trying to move things along, we're trying to keep projects going, but, um, finding time, get out in the field, and, um, just monitor what's going on with the projects is a concern of mine. Um, and, uh, what, I, I hope that it's been apparent to the council, that what I've been trying to do is not just, uh, keep the city afloat and, um, hold on. I'm trying to keep us moving forward, or trying to accomplish.
Thanks.
Mike Sabal? Uh, yeah, I, before I go further, uh, I want to thank you for everything you've done. But I want to point out, uh, Councilman Baker, I want to thank you. I mean, we were both out there multiple days, shoveling a whole pack of a lot of sand. Um, but that brings up something, I guess I showed you the list of these things, is what I'm going to be recommending here in the future, is taking that sandbag filling station out of that area, because it was just a one-way street pileup, and that's not fair to the citizens. We have a perfectly good marina that we can use, increase to 83 stations. You can snake the traffic in there, and it doesn't hurt the citizens. More importantly, if you haven't looked around lately, we're not a really young community. We don't have a bunch of weightlifters out there. Um, I know both Councilman Baker and myself, we have, we're delivering to other people. Uh, we don't have a list of senior citizens and, that needs to turn a firm, that can't do their own sandbags. And what I'd like to do is, double it later, is we get together kind of a core of subsixtons that can actually get a list of people that need the sandbag services. We come out first time, get them, take them, deliver them, and then install them for the people. But, uh, I'll give you people plans on it later. Like I said, you already seen some of the basis of it, so some thoughts with the sandbag situation going forward. All right, yes.
Kyle, so you mentioned the 15-inch, I guess it was elliptical concrete pipe that they came across. Where approximately was that located?
Okay, so the, um, right at the corner of 12th and Bay, uh, you have, uh, you have this, CDS unit on the south corner. And then if you go to the west, you have an inlet. Um, and that's where all the pipe was on the plant. Um, but if you take that inlet and you go across the street to the north side, there's a matching inlet that would cross pipe underneath. Um, from that inlet to the west, um, on the north side of 12th Street, where the first two inlets there, there's 112 feet of connecting 15-inch RCP. Um, it kind of completes a big circle.
Right.
Um, they did not know that was there.
Yeah, actually, I think I did have a conversation with the engineer on that particular drawing, and I pointed out that it did not make logical sense with respect to the pipes, and it didn't show a pipe. And he, he was, he finally agreed. Yes, there should have been something shown there. But, um, more importantly, you said that you felt like, when they videoed that pipe, it was not in good condition. Was it the pipe itself, or was it more of the joints again?
It was the pipe itself this time. There was a lot of cracking and leaking, divertic cracking.
Okay.
Um, but I, I will provide that to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
And I took a look at it, um, I'm not an engineer, but I, I thought it looked worse than the other.
Got it, got it. I did actually stop there, I think, Sunday evening, and I saw some of the pipe they had.
Took some pictures.
And, um, it was late in the afternoon, I watched a few football games, had some beverages, but it was pretty good. I guess it was pretty good shape, that particular stuff that was piled there. But probably most importantly, typically, an engineering firm will have errors and omissions insurance. So we need to definitely look into that, because it should have been their responsibility to identify that and have it in the plans, and that's what that insurance is for. So the contractor's going to come back now and say, change order, city of Bella Beach, UOS money, which we're going to have to come up with. But if it falls underneath the category of errors and omissions from the design engineering firm, that's what they have that insurance for. So we need to make sure we ask them about that, and their insurance could cover our additional costs where we don't have to pay that. Is that going to be worthwhile?
And that's a good point. I, you know, really, I'm surprised that we don't have accurate, um, maps of our infrastructure. It's, it's a little shocking to me, actually, because we're, we're old, but we're not that old. So, um, I, I guess as we move forward, maybe we should have those drawings updated and have more engineering, um, at least something of reference. Because it looks, sounds to me like we completely dropped off somewhere in our history on that one 15-foot pipe. Uh, the next thing, uh, I would like to commend everyone who participated in bagging sand. Um, however, I will say-
However, I will say that this is 2022 and there are alternatives to regular old sandbags. I don't know the cost yet, but I want to share a product with you that I came across and those were my sandbags, where you just take the black mag, you know, a box this tall, soaked in water and it becomes a water barrier for the water. And you can store literally thousands of them in a very small place. Again, I don't know what the cost is, but when you look at the amount of labor and the critical nature and also the fact that, as Mr. Banker described, there are people out there that are unable to help themselves. So this would be faster way to get those sandbags out without having to actually go out and dig sand. So I'll share that with you and we'll see if it's something that may be a solution for Bellar Beach going forward in the future. Great, great job, great report. Mr. Banker?
Any other comments? Yes.
Well, I've been here eight years. I'm not sure how long you've been here, but eight years ago, we used to have no lock of the sand over there, I had to recall it. And our former city manager said there was, I guess landscaping contractors coming and stealing some of the sand, so that's why you locked it up. But maybe from like May 15th to October 15th, we'd have one day a week. Now, I'm sure no one probably uses it, you know, because everyone rushes until, you know, wait until Hurricane, where they fill up the sand. Maybe one day a week that you can go over to just fill up the sand if they wanted. Because I was over there one night and the sheriff came up and says, you know something? And I, we don't know. He said, I'm just getting prepared, you know. But the other thing, this really works, you use DAB and like you probably know, like the quick stuff, you put the front barrier around it. When Hurricane Sandy came up, they ran out of sandbags in New Jersey. The ones they had, the DAB comes all the easy, the quick stuff never does, but it completely sealed stuff in the boardroom. They had no drainage.
Yeah, I agree with that. That quick stuff, I'm still scraping on, I can't remember.
Any other questions or comments for the annual city manager? All right. Let's move on to number eight. City first report, Ms. Gentry, do you have a report?
One was just the hurricane. We were surprised at how much we had to pack and move and then apply and then cover for, it came in from up top. And then we were here the very next day and unpacking and putting everything back in place, everything had to be moved, so that, that was good. And then the next thing is the board of adjustment hearing that Chairman Kelly talked about. So we'll be having that. And then last time we talked about the leads that had been filed. And so those two leads that are listed have been paid. And the only one that we haven't heard back on yet is the 16th Street one. So we should get that back any day now.
Great. Council? Questions for?
Just thank you, Patty, for staying late these nights, getting the citizens prepared. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you for getting these minutes updated. I know that was a lot of work. Anyone else? Thank you very much. All right, we are up to the consent agenda. This is covering items nine through 14. This is for approval of the July 19th, 2022 Special City Council City Manager Search Meeting Minutes. Approval of July 28th, 2022 Special City Council City Manager Search Meeting Minutes. Approval of August 1st, 2022 Special City Council Manager Search Meeting Minutes. Approval of September 7th, 2022 City Council Meeting Minutes. Approval of September 19th, 2022 City Council Work Session Minutes. And for authorization to execute the interloable agreement between Pinellas County and the City of Bellar Beach, providing for joint control of pollutants within Pinellas County. That being said, do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. You made the motion.
Sure.
Julie Shirley. And the second was? Frank Banker. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. All right, now we are on to the regular agendas. This is item 15, Consideration of Ordinance 22-04, First Reading. Mr. Moore, would you please read the summary?
After Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 22-04, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bellar Beach, Florida, amending the city's code of ordinances to repeal provisions establishing a Gulf of Mexico safety zone in order to conform to applicable state laws and regulations, establishing a vessel exclusion zone designated as a public bathing beach restricted to manually propelled vessels only, providing for the installation of regulatory markers, establishing violations relating to the public bathing beach, establishing the means of enforcement, providing for the incorporation of recitals, providing administrative direction to implement this ordinance, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This has been a first reading ordinance number 22-04 by title only. I spoke with the manager of Reflear, I take lead on just presenting the staffing on this. Hopefully this ordinance should not come as a surprise to any of you. This is the product of a series of attempts at other drafts that did not best serve this community's needs and desires. That is the legislative process and totally fine. We also had a workshop on this, on this issue and specifically with this draft in mind to discuss it, where this body considered alternative options. What this does is it conforms the city's code to the modern state of the law on vessel exclusion zones. And the city is given the leeway under Florida law and Florida Administrative Code to establish vessel exclusion zones. One of the categories that the city can establish is a public bathing beach. And we have elected to establish a public bathing beach as a community. The term public bathing beach is not specifically defined in Florida statute or the Florida Administrative Code, though many other forms of vessel exclusion zones are. That leaves that, that leaves that matter in our home rule powers to define as appropriate and in conformity with the other Administrative Code provisions, and that's what we've done here. So the proposed Gulf of Mexico safety zone as you know it, or to some, the existing area within the buoys as we've known those buoys in this community, would now be a public bathing beach where you are allowed to operate manually powered vessels. So if you have a sail, if the sail is down and hopefully if possible, runners up, and you're manually operating it, you can come in. Paddle boards, kayaks, canoes, all manually powered, all permissible within this zone. This does not allow for, excuse me, this does not allow for combustible engines to come in even if briefly, as that were under a low weight. That is not a term, a approach of the code countenance while in keeping in harmony with the existing definitions in the code and statute. So this is an ordinance attempting to reconcile the equitable interest of this community as articulated by the commission or the council, rather, that balancing the interests of your recreating public with your beach-going public and public bathers and children and all the things that have been raised in the various hearings. Ultimately, this is an ordinance which makes it a policy decision. All policies, money policies are founded by some legal requirements, but ultimately this is your, your decision to make as the city.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we have discussions on this, I'm going to need a motion to approve. Would you like to make a motion to approve? Second. Mike Sable and Frank Banker. Mike Sable, do you have the floor?
We've obviously discussed it thoroughly and then also you're not allowed to use a sail, a sailboard, a kite sail in those high-speed applications. Just want to, it comes down to really one thing. Look, not everyone's going to be very happy about it, but this protects everyone.
Thank you. Other comments? Frank Banker?
I believe this ordinance actually complies with Section 30-144, Section 3, motorized watercrafts not allowed to be in the beach areas of the Bellar Beach, and that's been on the books for 20-some years. And I always held this one back because, anyone knows me, I've been fighting about buoys from Bellar Shores up, not Bellar Beach, but I got, it was comical that sometimes we'd find out that, you know, people wanted to anchor their boats and have been anchoring their boats, but it's completely prohibited for 20 years. So, hey, I'm glad to see the buoys are staying.
Thank you, Mr. Banker.
I did have one question, just to go over other definitions. So number three, I just want to get a visual in my own mind where it talks about vessels equipped with sails or mechanical means of propulsion. They enter the marked area of only of the sails and mechanical means of propulsion, it's not used. Mechanical means, what do we try to convey there? I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Mechanical, meaning what? Because later on, it talks about here, it says, "And if possible to do so, the mechanical means of propulsion is tilted or raised out of the water."
So we would be giving those their ordinary meaning. Their ordinary meaning, mechanical typically implies an artificial mechanism powering it, not, not simply a pedal connected to a spoke. That's not mechanical means as this is constructed in context. What you'd be talking about is the engine or a sail down, the engine up, you know, in some, especially in little skips and things as you get in shower water, you can tilt that up so it doesn't scrape the bottom and things of the like. And so that's what it is referring to. The mechanical means would be the combustible engine, the, that sort of construct.
Okay, so this one, that's what I thought. So if somebody did have a combustible engine, but they were outside our buoys and they said, okay, I'm going to shut it off, you're going to paddle into shore.
That's permissible under this because the mechanical means are no longer engaged or induced and they are functionally, from a velocity standpoint, which is one of the concerns, that we were trying to harmonize from a velocity standpoint. At that point, they are, they are maybe larger mass. You can't paddle a 28-foot yacht nor get into shore at that depth, but your velocity is indistinguishable from paddle force.
Okay, just want to mention, got it, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Mr. Moore, I'd like to thank you first off for taking the time to tolerate us throughout this painful topic. It's, you definitely have more patience than most others.
Well, I want to, I want to take the time to commend this body. I want, I think it's important to recognize that frustrating though it may have been, this is how the legislative process is supposed to work. And I think ultimately, over the course of our three and four drafts, we got to a better work product. And that's the goal. The goal is ultimately to balance the interests and get a better work product. So often, and forgive me, but I'm going to take the option, the opportunity to use the soapbox, so often that division that we're seeing, that we saw in this process is characterized as, you know, stalemate and this person's intransigent, we can't get anywhere, nobody's getting anything done. This is the process. It's very frustrating inherently. Our democratic process is frustrating and it is slow and it is inefficient, perhaps slower than, though it will be allowed in. But it is the process. It's designed with that in mind and I want to thank you for your patience with me as we worked to that product, as I got to that understanding. I do, I do know, as between the workshop and now and on this first draft, there may be one slight difference in the second reading, harmonizing some of the elements that Member Natero raised before on the prohibited activities, being specifically called out and ensured that those are harmonized with this draft and we don't leave anything lingering or de stating anything that is in conflict is superseded. I meant to address that between publication to you and I did not. That will be addressed and has noticed to the public. That will be addressed more likely, most likely in your second draft unless we decide that we just want to do that by separate.
Thank you. And I'd also like to commend Councilmember Natero for calling into your attention. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to make a comment on this topic? Okay. All right, back to the council and we will give Mike Sable the final word.
Yeah, you said definitely agreement here. It's taken a long process, but I also want to commend Mr. Moore. It's also been a very good chance for us to work together and learn our working styles. He said, as when you first start a job, it's difficult. You don't know how people will work, how they will react. And it's really proven that this new city council really does work quite well together, including, you know, the interim city manager and the city attorney. So closing, I recommend, you know, vote yes to go forward with this.
Thank you very much. All right, so now we're going to take a vote. This is to approve the first reading of ordinance 22-04. Ms. Gentry, would you please call the vote?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Sable?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So it passes unanimously and we will do this again in line. All right, we are on to number 16, Consideration of Resolution 2022-07. Mr. Moore, would you please read this summary?
After Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2022-07, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bellar Beach, Florida, ratifying the state of local emergency in Bellar Beach declared by the mayor due to tropical depression, nine tropical storms, Ian, Hurricane Ian, and its potential threat to the residents and property of the City of Bellar Beach and providing for an effective date and termination date. This has been a first reading of Resolution 2022-07, person-only reading there.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-07?
So.
Motion made by Joey Shirley and I believe Frank Banker has a second. All right, Ms. Shirley, you have the floor.
This is just procedural, it's something that used to be, and I'm trying to clean up the resolution from Hurricane, and I really don't have anything more to add to that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? All right, let's go to the citizens on this. Any comments? Yes. John Hanson.
John Hanson, 22nd Street. First off, once again, please, Mr. Mayor, will the city council members put the microphones in front of their faces when they speak? There are two of them I could hardly hear. Thank you. On the resolution, I don't believe I have heard anything from the state that Governor DeSantis has terminated state of local emergency. So my question would be, do you, do you as mayor have discretion to terminate prior to his declaration or does that work?
Normally, we don't respond to questions, but I will on this one. I would like Mr. Moore to address this question.
Yes, and the question is well placed and I can, you know, I first want to begin by stating, this resolution in no way suggests that the events to the south of this county are somehow, you know, fake news or unreal and nor are you suggesting that. My folks are in Cape Coral and I'm very much aware of what that looks like. This is, falls within our home rule powers to recognize that it would likely be insincere to suggest we're making emergency purchases at this time because we don't have the means, time, or resources to go through the ordinary channels. And so through our home rule powers, we can recognize we don't have that need any longer though that need may otherwise exist in the state. And so for purposes of this declaration, it's recognizing that we are returning to business as usual and we are not going to invoke emergency powers in good faith. We are prepared to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any other questions or comments from the citizens? All right, let's bring it back to the council with Councilmember Shirley having the last word.
I'll be right back.
All right, so let's take a vote. I think we can just do this on the voice vote. This is to approve Resolution 2022-07. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, couldn't we do a vocal on this, please?
Pretty sure, yeah. In that case, please take a vote.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Sable?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. And surprisingly, we And surprisingly, we've come up with a second answer. All right, Resolution 2022-07 passes. Thank you, Patty. All right, on to item number 17. This is for consideration of Resolution 2022-08. Mr. Moore, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution 2022-08. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, delegating to the city manager the administrative authority to authorize the use of the city seal under certain conditions, making related findings, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This is a first and single reading of Resolution 2022-08 by Title I.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-08? Leslie Nataro, and anyone else for a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley. Leslie, you have the floor.
It's self-explanatory, it makes sense.
Other comments from the council? I just wanted to make it clear why you are wanting to have this authorization.
So, I had a conversation with the attorney, Moore, of a situation where there was a need to approve the use of the seal, obviously in a positive light for the city. And I asked him what the procedure would be to do so. And then he presented another, it was actually a county resolution as an example of it's done. And I felt that, you know, given the guidelines, it was something that I might place to kind of help with the procedural things that may be in the way through the process of using the city seal.
All right, I understand. And was there something that came up where there's an immediate need for that?
In consideration for the community foundation programs.
Okay. I just wanted everyone to hear. Any other comments from the council?
Is that seal a registered trademark?
My office has done trademark and intellectual property registration of city intellectual property. Coming into this, I haven't been asked that question yet. We can certainly look into whether it is, and if we desire to do that. I will tell you that in some communities, first and foremost, putting aside federal copyright law, it is a crime of the State of Florida to use a city seal without authorization, which is the genesis of this resolution to ensure there is no misunderstanding and to make very clear the conditions under which the manager would rescind that. The way this dialogue actually started, interim manager Reeffler approached me with the idea of extending this to the city seal or logo. And as we had that discussion, we realized there is no logo. To the extent some, or nothing beyond the city seal, that term is sort of used interchangeably, and we don't want to dilute its protection by characterizing it as a logo. But in communities like, and just as an example, the City of Dunedin, where they have the official seal, and then they have that sort of primary colors label, Dunedin, that they use as a logo, those are registered. And if we want to go to alternative designs, that may have an expanded use where we say, we're good with the logo being used, but not the seal, and sort of tier or brand those uses, that is an option for us, and we can look into that. At this stage, I'm not, and seems manager Reeffler's not aware whether this is registered, but I do think it's worthwhile to make all that known to answer that question.
I was just wondering, if it's not registered, is the resolution really valid?
Yes, it is, it is valid. This is legally customary, and again, within our powers to do that, both based on your statute.
I understand all that, but would a federal judge have pulled it? And you don't have the answer?
It's a license, so yeah, federal judge. Ultimately, it's our intellectual property, whether it's registered or not, it's still copyrighted. If I draw a picture here that's not Mickey Mouse, but is some random creation, it actually is entitled the Copyright Protections right there. It's just an unregistered copyright and may have diluted protections. This has a city seal and an official legal document. What we would be granting is a revocable license. So, the legal framework for that exists.
Thank you for explaining that. Vice Mayor.
I was going to say, this whole thing was a wreck. Some painful memories in the City of Beller Beach. Years ago, people tried to use this symbol behind us for, not for a few share of your being, or any of my debt, but just to say, you know, these things are long from the City of Beller Beach. So, you know, it was debated, logo, seal, whatever. The thing that came out is, that is not the symbol that appears on our city seal. And we stamp a document with the city seal, that's not the symbol that's on. So I'm saying, I guess we need to really gear our arms around this thing because, you know, we just kind of reinvent this thing every four or five years, and maybe it's time to.
According to your code of ordinances, this is in fact your official city seal. And the resolution reflects that citation. If it is not your city seal, that is, you know, I'm going based on the legal documents I have access to. If there's, and that may, whether or not that logo is used on what the clerk uses as a stamp may be something else, and that can be looked into, whether those can be harmonized. But according to your code of ordinances, if that specific depiction appears and is officially designated as the city seal.
Well, that ordinance was a result of this whole painful debacle. I'm not quite sure, it was given all the two things that said.
No, I appreciate it.
It just basically kind of went down the road, and that's what began to help to basically drive home the position of the city attorney.
Understood.
I agree, well, we really want to.
First and foremost, you actually be educating me now. Wouldn't it better to table this and get it ready? Because I didn't know there was two. You just educate me.
This is a resolution and not an ordinance, so we're not changing an ordinance. We're authorizing.
You are authorizing, the authorization here is specific in its scope. You can just, and I'm not suggesting to you what you should do ultimately. That's your decision as a body. You have the ability to table a resolution in the same manner you have an ordinance because it's still a policy document of the body. If you are not comfortable with its content, you have that ability. Again, I was aware that that ordinance was passed, and I believe it's 2018. And so that would comport with what you're describing that a few years ago, this was a topic of discussion. And so if there is, if there are misgivings, misunderstandings, or we feel due diligence needs to be done, we can address that. If this specifically, as written, the resolution specifically identifies this document as a seal, or this image as a seal, and the image that a revocable license could be granted for, if that's not the image that this body recognizes as a seal, that would be information to me that would be relevant. Vice Mayor Gunn.
Then I will put this issue to bed for one time. Let's get it done. I have a motion to table this until we can provide the further due diligence.
Second. We have a motion to table on the consideration of Resolution 2022-08. Patty, I think we're going to need to do a roll call, but we're on the table.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes, table.
Councilmember Natero.
No.
Councilmember Roberts.
No.
Councilmember Shirley.
Yes, table it.
Councilmember Zabel.
No.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis.
No.
So the motion to table fails. We need to move forward and vote him for this resolution. However, we have not yet taken any comments from the citizens. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Nope. All right, back to the council, and Leslie Nataro having the question.
Can I say something? I would say that with this moving forward, we need to have a plan, putting out this issue because it has been an issue that's heard its head a few times, and it was ugly to the point that council was wanting to prosecute one of our citizens for innocently placing this on piece of communication that they generated. So, it can lead to serious ramifications if we get this straightened out.
And I do understand that. My reasoning for moving forward on this is because we still have the community. Right. So we need to give them something to work with. And in the meantime, we should start working towards correcting this problem. There we go. So we're back to taking a vote on this. We're going to have to take a roll call.
Councilmember Baker.
No.
Councilmember Natero.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley.
No.
Councilmembers Zabel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis.
Aye.
So the resolution passes five to two. And we will revisit this in a mere few days. All right, we are on to item number 18. This is to nominate and elect a vice mayor following the resignation of Glenn Gunn from the vice mayor position. Before we get started, do I have a motion to nominate and elect a new vice mayor? Motion made by Vice Mayor Gunn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Jody Shirley has the second. So far, the council members who have expressed interest are Leslie Nataro, Jody Shirley, and Mike Zabel. Since the motion was made by Vice Mayor Gunn, I'll give you the opportunity to make the first nomination.
This council membership is comprised of people bringing many attributes to the council. Among those things are long-term residents. They've seen the good side of Beller Beach, they've seen the bad side, the evolution of Beller Beach. There are people with tremendous business acumen, they have a lot of expertise in the codes and contract, and they bring a lot of different aspects to the business side of life in the city. People bring assertiveness to this job. They step forward, they take leadership roles, they get them done. People bring a corporate history to this job. What things are we reinventing here? What have we tried before that didn't work? What have we tried before that works? And rather than waste time, reinvent the wheel, let's continue to go forward on this thing. Most importantly, voting on and doing what's best for the residents in the City of Beller Beach. There's only one person that comes to my mind and has all of these attributes. Long-term residents, they've seen the evolution of Beller Beach, good and bad, tremendous business acumen in contract and codes, assertiveness, taking the leadership role, and most importantly, the corporate history. We just talked about some of these things with the use of the city, local, senior, or whatever they're called. But most of all, this person always, always votes their mind of what's best for the residents and what's best for the City of Beller Beach. Personal agenda aside, personal feelings aside, it's what is best for the residents and the City of Beller Beach. And that person, Jody Shirley, and that's the person I'm nominating, because that person, because of all those attributes, and one person should be sitting front and center on this day alongside the mayor in helping shape where this community goes. So my endorsement and nomination is for Jody Shirley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. I will, I'll take other nominations. It's kind of hard to follow that. I'll nominate myself. All right, Mike Zabel. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate myself. I've been in the city council for a long time, a long time as a resident here. I've been part of major projects in the state, county, and so on.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations? All right, I know that we just heard from Litzel, but I would like to actually hear from each candidate. Who would like to speak and address the council and the citizens? I'm scared now. Jody Shirley.
Well, I've been a resident of Beller Beach since 2000. I have a lot of history here, I'm 2000, sorry. I have a lot of history here, I've seen many councils come and go. I understand why we have a place, some of the things we have in place. I consistently move forward on new ideas and new projects and stay consistent with keeping our infrastructure top on the list and not getting caught in the weeds on a lot of these small items that will affect citizens, but in the end, if we don't have infrastructure and a good running management team, none of those other items matter. I would love to work out the rest of the term as a vice mayor. But whatever we will decide is best, I'm fine with it, and will support our team however I need.
Thank you, Jody Shirley. Now let's go to Mike Zabel, the second nominee.
Yeah, first and foremost, I've attended every meeting here actually early and in person. I feel that's critical, you really have to be here to work. And most notably by, you know, leading from the front within the community. And then just on the last few days, you know, out there sandbaying, and you saw me out there personally. But, you know, amongst all, as I've reached out to the community, like I said, I got almost twice the number of people on my emails that I reach out to regularly. And I don't think anybody other than, actually, any other council members reached out to them, maybe with hurricane preps, would keep them informed of what's going on in the city. I think you'll look further, there's actually 35 items I'm proposing to get it done that will save the city considerable money. And no other candidate has done that. I'll give frankly, say, "Look, you're a previous council member, you're a previous mayor, and you failed to do it at that time, why should we elect you this time?" That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zabel. Ms. Natero.
Yes, I'm a full-time resident here since.
Ms. Natero, please turn your microphone on.
Okay. I've been a full-time resident here since 2002. Lived on the beach, originally got involved on beach refurbishment. When we first moved here, I caught a small hammerhead shark standing on my seawall, which is not a good thing. But worked with the state and with the county to get that done. Have worked with many, many of the people here in the town. And Beller Beach is a unique community. It's hard to describe to people that, you know, we're residential. We don't have any bars here, anything like that. But I think it's important that we maintain that ambiance, that sense of community that we have here, and I would like to continue doing that in the position of lady mayor.
Thank you. Would any other council members like to make a comment? All right, let's go to the citizens. Would any of the citizens like to comment on these three candidates? Yes, John Hanson.
John Hanson, 22nd Street. First off, let me say I'm not biased because we both served in the Navy. However, the fact that since Councilman Zabel has come onto this commission, this council, and even prior to the hurricane, he has led from the front. He's got some excellent ideas. I've read his emails. That's the man that should be the vice mayor. And I just have to say again, even though I did it in private, bravo, Sudo, Captain. That's the man that should be vice mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from the citizens? Yes, sir.
Hi, Kelly. I've worked with Jody and Leslie for 20 years. Each one of them have done. Each one of them have done an outstanding job. I don't doubt that Mike will do a terrific job now and in the future. I think this is your decision, council. We're not voting, you are. You've got great candidates, and each one of you has to vote your heart. So whoever you think you should support, you should. I'll never forget the phone call from a stranger named Jody Shirley, who called me one day when I was mayor, and said, "I don't know you, and I think you must be doing a hell of a job, because the guy in the newspaper really hates you. If there's anything I can do, let me know." And she and her children walked the street for me at reelection time. So I endorse Jody. I love you, Leslie, but it's your vote, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Yes, sir.
Again, my name's Randy Levis. Longevity in office, to me, doesn't mean much. I mean, you could look at the current president, who's been involved in politics for forty years, and doesn't impress me, but I just wanna say, I keep going back to the proactiveness that Mike Sable takes. Each and every day, I see emails, or notices, or updates on the storm and everything else. And in the last fourteen years, whatever, that I've lived here, I've never got any reaction from any people that ever sat on this body like this. And this guy, he seems energized deeply. He wants to do so much for the community, so I would urge you to give him the nod. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we're back to the council. My dear, from each of you that would like to give a final comment. Frank Baker?
What topic?
Ms. Notaro?
Nothing else.
All right, Mr. Roberts?
All done.
Mike Sable? Nothing else. Jerry Shirley? Vice Mayor Gunn? All right, let's take it to a vote. You have a ballot. Each of you have a ballot already. There are two, there are two blanks. One of them is name, and the other one is signature. Please write in your choice or candidate under name and under signature, just sign it.
Councilmember Baker voted for Councilmember Notaro. Councilmember Notaro voted for Councilmember Notaro. Councilmember Roberts voted for Councilmember Shirley. Councilmember Shirley voted for Councilmember Shirley. Councilmember Sable voted for Councilmember Sable. Vice Mayor Gunn voted for Councilmember Shirley. And Mayor Gaddis voted for Councilmember Shirley.
Thank you, Patty. So we have Jody Shirley, four. Mike Sable, one. Leslie Notaro, two. Congratulations, Jody Shirley, you are now the vice mayor. All right, now we are on to item number nineteen. Consideration of appointment of Park and Recreation Board alternate member to regular member. This was supposed to be DeRro DiCosimo. However, Patty informed me that Ms. DiCosimo has decided to remain as an alternate member. Therefore, I request that we withhold any motions on this item. All right, now we are up to number twenty. This is for consideration of an agreement between the Vellar Beach Community Foundation and the city of Vellar Beach for a Great Brick Program. This was added to the agenda by interim city manager Reifler. Before we begin discussion, do I have a motion to approve?
Sure.
That would be Leslie Notaro. And do I have a second? That was Jody Shirley. All right, I'm gonna give this over to Mr. Reifler and let him explain what we're trying to do here. Thank you, Mayor.
So, just to start out, because this is the first agenda item, I started listing the strategic plan as we brought it up in the last meeting, and I feel this one falls under the aesthetics of the community as a goal of the strategic plan.
Mr. Reifler, can I get you to speak up a little bit? Sorry, I'm getting a little bit back on this microphone.
Okay, I think it's a little better. So, what I was trying to say is, as far as lining this item up with the strategic plan, this represents a goal, aesthetics of the community. And what this is, is it's an agreement worked on by Attorney Mora for the Vellar Community Foundation, the Great Brick Program. This agreement, some key points of it. Let me just give a little history of the Vellar Beach Community Foundation. It's a reform public charity, and I did include their mission. Their mission is, BBCF's mission is to foster a healthy, beautiful, and thriving environment through good works, community improvement projects, and social gatherings to enhance the lives of the residents. In the background, we brought this up in our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, they liked the idea, just to kind of run it by them. We came up with two possible locations for this, which I'll get to later, and I included it as attachments. So the agreement itself is, it places the BBCF in charge of selling or receiving funds for the Great Brick Text, maintaining records of funds, and keeping some of the bricks. So the BBCF will manage every aspect of the Great Brick Program, with the exception of the initial installation of the bricks. That will be the city of Vellar Beach's responsibility. One other point is that the city is agreeing to install the bricks, minimum of six bricks, and not, the BBCF will not request the city to install the bricks more than one time per six months. I also included the BBCF Great Brick Program order form, as well as the suggested locations that the Parks and Recreation Board came up with. The key element to these locations are visibility, and feeling the city out properly was one of the most visible properties in the city.
Thank you very much. Council?
I have a question maybe for Mr. Mora. I see Tia Luvende is the chairman of the foundation. She's also chairman of the Parks and Rec Board. Does that cause any issues?
I think the question that you're asking is dual office holding. I can't tell if it's dual office holding or if it's an ethics question. Inasmuch as the, as I understand, BCF is an entity entirely separate and distinct from the city, so you don't have a dual office holding element because it's not a public office. Inasmuch as your question is, a member of the Parks and Rec Board is a member of the foundation, this nonprofit organization, I'd have to know more about what their salary is and how that's remunerated, but as I understood, to the extent this question had been raised in the broadest terms possible, this is an independent nonprofit entity looking to partner with the city. That Parks and Rec Director doesn't have the ability to independently direct the city's funds and resources, that's done by the council. So that's not, that's not really a power. I don't see an issue as it's presented, based on the facts I know of now.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Frank Baker?
Under the results, establishing a Great Brick Program to recognize and honor parks organizations, events related to the city of Vellar Beach, and is this something more like the Indian Rogers Museum, where all the way you go in there, it has anywhere from people's names to events that happen, the tanks of the yard, the sky's the same brick wall, there's a lot. Or is this gonna be like, you have to have, you have to do something for the city or recognize the city's past mayors or something like that? Who's gonna pay for these bricks, is what I'm saying? And who's going to say, "This is allowed or not allowed"?
So the people who fill out the application, they're paying for the bricks, right? And it's a form of raising money for the foundation to in turn positively affect the city. And then the determination is the Vellar Beach Community Foundation, they will, I believe we put in here. It's something about positive. The performer due diligence background investigation of persons organizations. So, yeah, it's, they're solely in charge of approving the bricks, taxing the huge charges. It has to be something that's approved for, funded by the city.
And they would have the approval, not the city itself or the foundation? I'll give you an example, I want to buy a brick in God bless Vellar, and is that approved, or are we not allowed to use the word "done"?
Well, clearly says they're not discriminating. And that the only exception is, is that you've been convicted of a felony and you want to put your name on it.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get some clarity, because I, I worked down in IRB. I believe it's the same foundation that authorizes or not.
It is not the same foundation, inasmuch as the Vellar Community Foundation is not partnered with that city, to my knowledge. It may be a similar model, I'm not familiar with how that program specifically operates. I would tell you, as it relates to the agreement that is before you, the way it's drafted is the initial, there is a section called Brick Text Exclusions, which member Shirley called out, but the way it's written, BBCF has initial editor's license, if you will. If somebody says, "I don't think BBCF has made the right decision here, or it should be allowed," notwithstanding BBCF's position, it does provide a dispute mechanism, where they could appeal the decision to BBCF, and BBCF representatives would meet with the city to review the original request and render a final decision on the appeal, which will be forwarded to the donor. So there is an element where if somebody says, "I want this," and BBCF says, "No," I'm sorry, I said, Vellar Beach Community Foundation, and they say, "No," that person has an opportunity to say, "Hey, I want the city to weigh in on this as part of the process." That's how it's designed.
So we don't have to pay for the appeal or any right that the city, or you?
That sounds like it would be much more of an administrative hearing, with the manager perhaps sitting with a designated representative of BBCF, saying, "Explain it to me, let's go through." There's nothing in here that contemplates a quasi-judicial hearing before a city body. It's not a city program, the city's just making its resources available to enhance the beautification and aesthetics, but it's reserving the right to participate in the process so that, and that is a sort of a contemplating check and balance. If they are being arbitrary and egregious and are actually discriminating, "Oh, well, it says this, and we just don't like that," they're gonna have, and that person says, "I still want this," the city's going to have an opportunity to say, "No, you can't do that."
Second. Other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Roberts?
Kyle, so do you need a decision, or do we even get involved in which of the two placement options, or is that something you guys are just gonna handle?
Well, I wanted to get an idea from you, what you thought was a better location for the bricks. That's why I included those.
Do you want that aligned?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
If you guys feel one way or the other, if you're stupid or not.
And ultimately, what manager Reifler's looking for is authorization entered into the agreement.
Sure.
So as we look at this, having listened to the dialogue, if we need to make changes in that appeal language, maybe one that we revisit to make a little more specific how that's resolved, we can do that. So they'd be seeking authorization to move forward with the agreement in substantially the same form, and perhaps that design choice that you just raised.
So if it is, if we do approve this, I think it's a good, good program choice of those two options. And I did attend, I think, one or both of those particular committee meetings, and we talked about different things. My personal preference is the actual sidewalk. We did talk about, you know, if we wanted to go ahead, you could actually remove one of the rectangular portions of the sidewalks there, and potentially fill them in with un-scribed bricks, and then as people buy them, you know, we can take that out and place it in there. We would always have that one rectangular section, number of bricks, in our possession, and we give them forward like that. I think when people, when you walk over it, you know, you actually see it better than on the perimeter of the sidewalk. That's just my personal opinion.
Other questions or comments on this topic? Let's go to the citizens, frankly, concerning the Vellar Beach Community Foundation and the agreement to place bricks. All right, we're back to the council, and Ms. Notaro, you have the final word.
No further comments. Can I approve it?
So, this is to approve the agreement between the Vellar Beach Community Foundation and the city of Vellar Beach for a Great Brick Program. I was originally just gonna do a voice vote. Patty, are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agreement passes. Mr. Reifler, you are authorized to proceed. Now we are on to agenda item number twenty-one. This is for authorization to approve, propose, a proposal for plan review services placed on the agenda by interim city manager Reifler. This is to request authorizations to contract with Madrid CPWG Services to review new building plans for compliance with city codes. Before we get started, do I have a motion?
So?
Jerry Shirley, do I have a second?
Second.
Lloyd Roberts? All right, Vice Mayor Shirley, you have the floor.
Yeah, this, it's necessary that we have a reliable engineering firm to review these plans in a timely fashion. You go to any municipality, they give you a timeframe in which your plans will be reviewed, and as we stand right now, we can't do that. So Kyle needs some support from a reliable firm, and I think he can rely on CPWG to do that more.
Thank you. Who else? Other comments? Vice Mayor Gunn? Councilmember Gunn? I'm taking a little shake, that one.
Yeah, I had a discussion with Kyle Roder about this. This is the corporate memory thing, we dealt with this organization during the energy rowing project at BBI, we had some issues, so I just want to... rowing project at BBI, we had some issues, so I just want to, we need a reassurance that we want to ensure the responsibility given to it in a timely, current environment of these, this case. Otherwise, I agree with Vice Mayor Gunn, we need this capability, we need to give the contract around timeframes if necessary, but don't.
Thank you.
Mike Sabal. Well, this is full source. I mean, I understand the other firms being considered evaluated.
A little bit, this came from the RFQ in 2019, after receiving eight middles for that, we decided on the top five that we signed agreements with. The agreements were pretty broad, you know, for miscellaneous services and plan review. From that point, former city management, memories and I ranked those firms, we found that Larry Flippin ESG was the best choice, given his history and his flat rates, and there anybody had regular table. Larry worked with us for a couple of years after that, like I wrote here, unforeseen circumstance, he was no longer able to work with us, so at that point, we moved to dual associates, who's a firm that's been in this area for some time, and they accepted to him to plan review for an hourly rate. And then since then, you know, they've been purchased by sub-engineering, and from, in my working with them, it's been taking a little bit longer to have plans turned around for review. My intent of this approval, this proposal, was just to reach out to another firm that was on that RFQ and provide another option that we can use, but after having a discussion with former Vice Mayor Gunn, I think that the best, in the best interest of the city, it's about time that we went out for another RFQ, and at that point, we formalize more detailed agreements with expectations as far as timelines for the plan review.
Oh, absolutely, it should went after the RFQ rather than going to this, because it seems like there's no due diligence going into this person. Were these me? Yes, very did.
Yes, it did.
Right, right. I agree with you, you got 2019, based on whatever information was back there, and here we are asking it, sign off, because I trust this company, I don't know this company.
I guess this is, what you say, a temporary, to try and get things moving on quicker in the interim.
Yeah, but we should do it right the first time.
Other comments?
Ms. Natera. What minor comment on the agreement, page two, period of service 3.1, it would probably get your recipe of a fully executed copy. Spell check, fix check. Should have been received.
Which states almost anything?
3.1, period of service. It's the agreement from September. I don't wish to make any decisions. See that? Trying to make the conversation work.
So, I guess my concern is I'm trying to find a solution, we continue with dual engineering firm, there's some frustration with the turnaround of the site plan review, in full grades, continuing to do it, but I did have a conversation with them today about, we have another option, and they were in the moment that the, the mini engineer that worked at L, L Carrier, he said that they did something so much around the backlog, they'll be up to another firm that'll catch up. So I do agree with you that RFQ is, is that's the situation I am, for the, for the time period of just trying to move things through without frustrating the contractors.
And I have not, or I have actually heard complaints about the timeline of the process. I do agree that we need to do a formal RIP, however, I have no problem authorizing this as a temporary solution to help you in this time of crisis. Any other comments from the council? Yes.
I'll sign on to the temporary status, if we put a timeline, 60 days, 90 days, 120 days?
Yeah, folks concurs with that, you don't write a line check, say, no timeline, no, we're going to stop that. There must be a timeline.
Only 90 days.
Exactly.
I agree, we need something in, or if it's abandoned, it's talking out there, so let's just put a time requirement.
If I may, I would, that feedback is well taken, I think what, what might be the better way is prioritizing the RFQ process, rather than putting a expiration date on having additional resources. This is sort of the, to, to, to try to reason my analogy a lot, this is sort of buying a second branch to keep in the toolbox, and you can use either one. I wouldn't advise that you handicap yourself by saying, well, we're only going to go back to that one branch that's kind of working for us by date certain. If, for example, we're really working on our RFQ process, and we're trying to find two in those terms, and now we've got, oh, this is coming to an expiration date, I think that becomes a better reflection of how you folks prioritize your workflow going forward on this, and, and holding the manager and administration accountable where are we on getting that RFQ out. Ultimately, again, that's your decision, but I would suggest, rather than limit the number of resources and their availability to you, that that would be limited better by your next action, rather than this action.
Yes, Vice Mayor Gunn.
I understand.
Mr. Gunn.
The issue you're going to run into, though, is your RFQ process has a project timeline and a toll, so you've got to pull one together, it's going to go through the process, it's going to be advertised, you've got to review it and that, so I mean.
Which is why I'm saying we shouldn't, you shouldn't say, like, oh, we're going to do this for 90 days, and then find that the RFQ process takes you 120, and now you're back to only one resource for those last 30 days.
Yeah, so, so the RFQ process can give us a timeline, right?
Right, exactly, that process will take.
Okay, I'm on the same thing.
Precisely, yes, sir.
So how long would we need for an RFQ process to run? 90 days, 120 days?
For the RFQ process, I'd say 90 days is very uncomfortable with that.
You're comfortable with that?
I think I could do it in 60.
Drafting, writing?
Yeah, put it in a.
Are you doing it in 60? 90 days?
90 days. Mike Sabal.
Every couple of the 90 days, yes.
Okay, but that's, that's not on this, so this is something that we would just have to reach a consensus on, that we're going to hold on to that. Actually, I prefer not to afford on this, I'll make a motion to table this second. Okay. We have a motion to table, so let's take a vote. Now, once we do a motion to table, all the discussion stops. Patty?
Councilmember. Sorry, councilmember Baker?
Yes, to table.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye, too.
Councilmember Natera? No, to table. Councilmember Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Sabal?
Yes, to table.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
No.
Mayor Gaddis?
No. So the motion to table fails, now we need to go back to the original motion. We've had our discussion, anything else before I go to the citizens on this? Citizens, anyone like to speak? All right, we are back to the council, Vice Mayor Shirley having the last word. Yes, Vice Mayor. Mr. Gunn.
So I'd like to amend this thing, to put a 90 day time limit on the authorization for this temporary fill, pending RFQ for full time.
I'm hearing a motion to amend, second. A second. So now, this is for authorization to approve proposal for plan review services with a time limit of 90 days. Let's see, I guess we need to go back to the citizens now.
Just, just to clarify, what I was saying in the 90 day time grid, I was agreeing to the RFQ and receiving results from it, and then scoring and qualifying those firms. After that, agreements would be, need to be drafted, I would request a little more time to, to get the correct agreements in place, and, and get the firms sign off.
We currently have a motion on the table to amend with 90 days, but you'd like to retract that motion, or would you like to move forward?
Would you want to amend that?
Yeah, I, just have a comment, I think it's, in the services agreement, there's a termination of convenience, and either party can terminate it on 30 days notice, so I don't think we need to put, say it's only good for 90 days, you know, it's covered.
I think what, what Mr. Gunn is trying to do is trying to make sure that we actually do what we say we're going to do. Now, that being said, we can always do, we can always do another, add another agenda item, another reservation, move forward the next meeting, or we can just go ahead and come in to with a limit.
I'll restate my amendment, then, to put a 120 day?
Right.
60 days. I think. 120 days is what?
120 day time, we're going to get a temporary CPWG assistance.
The motion maker is amending the, is, is, is electing to amend the motion from a motion to amend for 90 days to a motion to amend for seconds for 120 day limitation. I believe it was, or I forget who it was, I think it was Vice Mayor Baker who seconded. Remember, has the individual seconded, or are you amending all of that?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to amend is amended such that it's 120 days.
Okay, so now we are, we're working on authorization to approve proposal for plan review services with a 120 day limit. We have a motion, and we have a second, and now we're going to discussions.
I just want to confirm, Kyle, you comfortable with 120, or would like another 180, be six months be a better time period? What makes you comfortable with that?
If I can get it on, just.
120?
Okay. Other comments from the council? Let's go to the citizens. Back to the council. Vice Mayor Gunn. This is to, this is for your.
On order. Yes, sir.
Go on to Vice Mayor.
Oh, did again. It's a hard habit to break.
He knows that either it's wrong.
All right, well, let's go then. All right, so let's take a vote. We're, we're going to take a vote.
Councilmember.
Well, this is to authorize the approval, I'm sorry, authorization to approve proposal for plan review services with a limit of 120 days. Patty?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Natera? No. Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabal?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
And I think, I'd like to thank everyone for asking this, I think it's going to benefit Kyle and Frank. All right, we are on, we're getting there. We're on to item number 22, the moment that Victor has been waiting for all of that. This is for consideration to execute service agreement with Victor Reeburn, help me out, Victor.
Burianic.
Burianic. For city council meeting video recordings, this was placed on the agenda by interim city manager Reefer pertaining to continue video recording services with current contractor. Before we have a discussion, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Frank Baker, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that one to Lloyd Roberts. Mr. Baker, you have the floor.
Well, the memorandum speaks for itself, I think he's done an excellent job, and I think we should retain it.
Other comments from the council? No comments. Let's go to the citizens, anyone like to speak on this, this agenda item? No? All right, we're back to the council again, with Frank Baker having the last word. No, no last word. All right, since this is another contract, Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Natera?
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmembers Sabal?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye, and it passes unanimously, seven to zero. Congratulations on the picture, and Mr. Reefer, you may proceed. All right, now we are moving on to number 23. This is consideration of councilmember Sabal's proposed communication procedures, this was placed on the agenda by councilmember Sabal. Before I, I call for a motion, I would like to address Mr. Sabal on this, just because there's several items in the one single agenda item. My recommendation is to either withdraw this agenda item, or have the council make no motion on it, as it stands in now, I don't think every item will pass on a single vote, however, I do believe we can move forward on some of these, just by general consensus in the next work session. These are only my suggestions, if the council prefers to move forward with this now, we can proceed. So, do I have a motion to move forward with councilmember Sabal's proposed communication procedures? Nope, all right, the motion dies, and what I would recommend is that we bring this up, it's actually not a motion to die, but the agenda item did not move forward. I recommend that in our next work session, and Mr. Reefer, he'll go ahead and add it to the next agenda, that we take these bullet points and we discuss them.
If the name is mirror on that, there's actually not just those bullet points, it's actually third lies, and they're attached, so if we put those in the working session. In fact, I'd rather prefer going through the working session, there's a lot here that the council's never attempted before, have a lot of work to do on.
That works for me, and I appreciate all of your hard work, and taking the time to put some sort of a directional list for us.
Well, yeah, the idea is you don't come to you with a problem, you come with a solution.
All right, now we are on to the added agenda item, number 24, which is concerning the city manager's search. There's really nothing to vote on on this, it's going to be a discussion item, just to kind of roll this into unfinished business. This was brought forth by Vice Mayor Shirley, and I will hand the floor over to you.
Mayor, with all respect to member Shirley, if I may, just by way of update, at the last meeting, I was tasked with reaching out to the FLC, its resources, replace some phone tag and lead up to Ian, and had a communication breakdown, as far as, on my end, as far as follow up through Ian. Member Shirley, stupidity followed up with me earlier today, I spoke with the representative from the senior advisor program, that is its current moniker, if you've heard road rangers or council advisors in the past, the new brand is senior advisor, we're talking about the same thing. I, I've worked with their local representative, is Pam Ricacho, in other communities, and I had a call with her this afternoon, or late morning. In speaking with her, I explained the current state of the landscape, done recruitment, extensive citizen input, extensive review, had a candidate, it fell through, she was tangentially aware of it, she was also familiar and had worked with. She was also familiar and had worked with Mr. Reeves in the past. And I explained that interim manager Reefer has been working in the position for a few months, and while individual members might differ on what the best step is to go forward, there was a general consensus to say, let's take a beat, reevaluate where we are, see if perhaps the situation is working enough that we should meaningfully entertain it or provide this member, manager Reefer additional resources to ensure his success or that he has the resources to make that success an option for him, if you will. In speaking with the senior advisor, I floated, based on the general discussion that I'd heard at the last meeting, the idea perhaps for sitting down with manager Reefer, getting acquainted personally, sitting with a representative of the council, maybe the mayor, or member Shirley, whomever you folks deem appropriate, to get that sort of the legislative perspective on this, the legislative branch's perspective, and just based on her experience, coming to your next meeting, which I believe is November seventh, which works well, she's got extensive travel schedule, and she's already penciled in, if the council so desires, to attend the next meeting and based on efforts made in the next few weeks, provide you some recommendations going forward, whether that be, here's what you can do through ICCMA and trainings and otherwise, and what that calendar of events look like, whether it's, I do think you may wish to go about a search, and this is what that process could look like if it was your senior advisor otherwise, but giving you a read. The general, I will tell you that the consensus in most leadership positions is if it ain't broke, don't fix it, and ultimately, if it ain't broke is a determination for you folks to make. I'm not pining on that by saying that, but ultimately, if manager Reefer is working out for you, obviously destabilizing leadership is never preferable. The one point that she and I did discuss was how the council would wish to handle the fact that interim manager Reefer is holding multiple positions. I'm sorry, I know it's like sort of we even talked to each other, she was like a- But the, her one point of insistence was, if that is the direction, both for the success of the community and the success of the candidate, both parties are going to have to decide, you know, from manager Reefer's desire, if he's going to be made interim manager with a contract, recognizing that he leaves behind the comfort of employment versus actual employment in a charter position, and also just whether or not there are means to backfill his position on an ongoing basis, his past provision, position, if that is a past position. Just recognizing you're going to have resource needs to make sure all meetings are met. I'm not telling you anything that hasn't been said about fourth and ways over the course of this meeting, but that is where things stand. So my inquiry to you, inasmuch as I was delegated or designated as a liaison for that resource, is would you like me to ask on behalf of the council for or to engage in that sort of process or some permutation?
I think that we're looking for direction and probably could use some help. So I'm only one person, I'd like to hear what other council members have to say, beginning with Vice Mayor Shirley since she had this to the agenda.
Yes, so I reached out to her attorney more today regarding this issue, knowing that we need to make some decisions. I can tell you that I think we asked Kyle how he was doing at one of our work sessions, and he said he's hanging on, and we need to make some decisions one way or the other, get some assistance in getting help. He can't continue to work the way he is, and we need to come up with a solution and a plan on how we're going forward. It can't be ignored, we can't have a meeting go by without just being topic of this discussion and having that outlined, and whatever that looks like, whether it's appointing someone on council to spearhead it, that something needs to happen to move forward.
Thank you. Other comments from the council? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Well, a little over a week ago, we were facing a Pat two or a crap three hurricane. This man's been our interim city manager now since June. I think he's been flawless. I don't know what more this council wants out of this man. He's doing three jobs sometimes. Gave up his weekend, he gave up his family, he serves the city, gave up his homely, put our city first. What more do we want out of him? I think we should go into contract talks right now with this man, and he's the best candidate for this city. He's dedicated, he's a hard worker. Hey, if we want to get him a little bit more education, fine, put it in the contract, that he has to do something like that or whatever, fulfill these goals, you know? But let's stop this process. I recommended him to second week or third week of March. It's now, what, seven months later, he's still an interim city manager. It would have been a joke if we wouldn't paid a hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars for that other guy to come here. He would have never filled one sandbag last week, two weeks ago.
Other comments?
I totally agree with what Frank just said. I think we need to change our search to finding a public works director.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts?
I've had the opportunity to work with Kyle very closely on a couple of projects and meetings that we've had. The most recent was when we went over code enforcement. And I can tell you that the time that I've been here and got to know Kyle more and actually seeing his expertise and knowledge and how he deals with things, I have moved the meter in my own mind with respect to, is he the best candidate? I currently feel he is, and here's my personal feeling. You know, all the criteria that somebody's going to have is going to be our city manager. From zero, the score of one to ten, I don't think anybody is going to be a ten in all the categories. I'm confident there's several criteria that Kyle, because of his working knowledge of our city and the time that he's been here, he's going to be pretty much anybody on those type of categories that we're going to bring in from the outside. It's just logical, that's the way it's going to be. There's probably some other things that Kyle may not, you know, meet the standard of some other people that we might bring in, in some other categories, but I think any of those categories, Kyle, like any of us, would get better. I think back on my career, I was put in high leadership positions, and I guarantee you, when I got that opportunity and went home that night, didn't sleep very well, because I knew there were some things I needed to be better at, and as my time in those positions, I grew in those opportunities, just like any of us would do and will do. So I'm confident now, having the additional time with Kyle and seeing him work and understand things, that he has my support.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Gunn?
I'm on board with everything that's been said. I'll ask a couple of questions here, because my observations are Kyle will do the job. And when it comes to motivation and dedication, we're not going to fight here. The differences in what we would have paid some of the high-powered people, we can buy or outsource the expertise we might fall short on. We'd like to continue to see Kyle self-develop and start positioning himself for maybe some future higher responsibility or something like that. In the interim, I think he's our guy, and I just need to make sure that Kyle's comfortable with that, because you're going to sign up for it, serve at the pleasure of the council, and backfill behind you, and that may have some repercussions. You have my trust and confidence, I think he can do it, and the question is, is do you share that?
Yeah, to answer your question, again, when I first applied for this position, I, it was a responsibility and a risk that I accepted, and I believe that's the step you to taking a position of leadership. You know, we work for seven different council members, so it's just, it's a lot of work, it's constantly adjusting and improving yourself, and it's what I've wanted, so, yeah, thanks for your suggestion.
I think we've had a great observation during high-end, high-tempo ops, surge operations, wherever you want, he's measured up really well, so I'm all for making it a permanent position, in fact, willing to give him the resources he needs to do his job appropriately. That's what-
Thank you. Mike Zabel?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we direct attorney more to draft a contract for Mr. Kyle Reefer, move him from interim to full-time and enter negotiations.
Second?
You're making a motion to draft a contract to move forward with Kyle as the city manager?
Absolutely. Everything I've seen so far, worked with him side by side, he's got it. With our support, he can succeed. We do have backups, we have professional people that can enter into this and work with him. We cannot move forward on his previous position until we lock him down to this one. Once we lock him down to this one, we sign contracts, become mutual terms, at that point, we open the search for his replacement. For as far as time, let's get a little bit on this.
We have a motion on the table. Would anyone like to comment? I think we haven't heard anything from Vice Mayor Shirley.
Yeah, I mean, I opened the conversation up, you know, the caveat was trying to get Kyle some help. I do agree, he's probably would be great in the job. I do feel strongly that a senior advisor coming on board to assist him, to give him guidance, to mentor him would be a huge benefit. I don't mind to keep having these conversations, that we can move forward with Kyle. I don't know what that, you know, absolutely what that would look like, but I do know that we need to move forward in some manner in getting this off our plate, so we're not revisiting it constantly and it's not being pushed under a rug. So it's moving forward with contracts, that's, I'm fine with that, if everyone's in agreement on it, and I'm open to suggestions that we don't have this conversation again, and we have a commitment on how we're moving forward.
Thank you. I wrestled with this for a while, and as time goes on, I've become more and more impressed with you, Mr. Reefer. I think you've stepped up to the plate, you've done things that I thought for sure would be way out of your wheelhouse, but you pleasantly surprised me. I was hoping we had a little more time, but it looks like the will of the council is to move forward with this. Before we take a vote on this motion, I'm going to have to go to the citizens for comments. Anyone like to comment? Let's start with the fire chief.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Davidson, your fire chief. I'm not a resident of Miller Beach, but I wanted to share my experience with Kyle recently here in preparations with Hurricane Ian, and Kyle and I were in constant communication with each other in everything that we did with preparations, and he actually even reached out to see if he could be at our emergency operations center for the duration of the storm, so that he could be here as close as possible to Miller Beach, because he lives pretty far away. Normally, we don't have community leaders in the emergency operations centers as we run an emergency and throughout, and for the after effects. But that was Kyle, and we made arrangements for him to do that, thankfully Ian took a turn, and we're pretty focused and effective. But that was Kyle's dedication to the city of Miller Beach, and we made those arrangements for him, and thankfully, he didn't have to be here, but he did above and beyond. And to share one, my last experience, professional experience, we had an interim city manager that did an outstanding job, and everybody urged the council to hire that person, and they decided to go with somebody who had more experience as a city manager, and that person didn't last six months, and now the person who they originally recommended is the city manager permanently. I just wanted to just share my experience of what a professional Kyle has been in representing your city and your citizens. Thank you for your time.
Chief Davidson, how did you know to be here tonight?
Well, I was actually here last Monday, and I said, where is everybody? And it was on my calendar at the wrong time, so, no, I want to be at your meetings, I was going to be here, I came in late, and I had another meeting to be at. I'm glad that I was able to be here and given my two cents there.
Thank you for your comments, they're very appreciated.
Thank you.
John Hancic.
John Hancic, Twenty Second Street. I have watched this opera of sorts for a very long time, from the beginning, I've been involved in it on the citizens advisory committee. Kyle was in the top four or five recommendations from the CAC, and unbeknownst to the committee, you guys got to pick somebody. That's fine. I'm here to concur with everybody and state councilmember Zabel's motion is long overdue. I remember sitting here, going through, listening to you all at a work session, and again, the same council member made some suggestions, recommendations, that Kyle was agreeable to. When he was finally a member of the conversation, he also understood the consequences if he accepted and was hired on as city manager, and he backfilled with a public works director. And I've sat here and listened to everybody tonight, let's vote, let's get a contract, that's your man, that's our man. Thank you.
Hear the comments from the citizens. All right, we're back to the council with Mike Zabel having the last word. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, Victor, I'm sorry. You're always over there hiding your honey camera.
I've been working with the city for a long time, since Nancy Gonzalez was the city manager, and then we had our former city manager, and Kyle was working closely with all the projects, and he's done a fantastic job, and as a contractor, I've seen like no change in communication, or everything's been presented very well from Kyle, so also in support of him, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, now we're back to the council with Mike table having the final word.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's been a long process, we've done our due diligence. Kyle and I work very tight together, in fact, we're working on Parkville right now, we could probably save the city about two thousand a year, which is kind of cool, but he has my strongest recommendation at this point. I want to move ahead, vote on this, work out a contract, hopefully negotiate it to the satisfaction of both parties and move on.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go to the vote. This is very important, so Patty, would you do a call?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes, proceed to a contract.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye, proceed.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel?
Yes, proceed.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. It passes unanimously. Attorney Moore, I will provide, I will prepare a draft for Mr. Reefer's review. I'll say it in public venues, in addition, saying privately, while you and I work together on a regular basis, as I send you drafts, so you're free to have your own independent attorney review for your rights and interests. I represent the city, its council in that process, and that doesn't change that we're still, you know, cool. I just have to make that clear. And so with that, I will proceed. Obviously, I have, I'm not starting from scratch, I'm also not going to be using all the same terms. I'll take into account what this body has talked about. Member Shirley, to your point when you talked about, the idea of moving forward with Mr. Reefer is not incongruent with the idea of using and making- Mr. Reeffler is not in con竿 with the idea of using and making resources available to him, um, through that process, and I can also look at metrics much in the same way that the previous contract had goals. If this council, um, as we go through that drafting process, has goals different from or in addition to, or the same as what had been in that, I believe was the exhibit D of that contract, that you think should be specific to Mr. Member Reeffler, um, please let me know, uh, we can take those into account, um, sorry, Manager Reeffler, and we'll, we'll work forward with that. But, um, and if, if after a draft is initially circulated, you folks feel we need a workshop or something else particular, then we can, of course, accommodate appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and, uh, I'm assuming that once an agreement is reached, then it would be up to Mr. Reeffler to hire his replacement. Is that correct?
At that stage, you will be your chief administrative officer, as he is now, but with a very clear mandate that he is to fully occupy that office. At that point, in a manager form of government, he will have all the powers to hire and fire as necessary, which would include identifying his successor. The only reason I'm speaking in those vague terms is he's going to have to decide what personnel needs he has as the manager and how to prioritize filling those positions, and I'm not going to dictate which position would be first or, or whatever.
Thank you very much for that clarification. All right, so now we are on to Agenda I on 25, unfinished business. And we're actually doing pretty good, it's only nine o'clock. Any unfinished business?
For now, something that needs to be considered soon. Um, just a couple of questions. I asked Planning and zoning, who is our, um, who's our chair for the Planning and zoning board? Does anyone know?
J.C. info?
We, we just didn't ever show up for the quarterly reports, so we maybe need to consider changes with that board. We've done it in the past, so this may be the time we need to step in and make some changes, because we do, um, in 2023, need to revisit our comprehensive plan, and we need a team that's really very interested in doing so. So just being proactive.
That's, uh, that's good advice, and, uh, I concur. Can I add to that, we're actually talking to the attorney, I mean, this is not an unknown occurrence for this council, the previous council had problems when they dismissed the member of the committee. Can we just double-check the attorney, make sure that we're crossing no RTs and dying no RIs on this case?
I wasn't fully following that conversation, and I understood it as we need to, this needs to be something we talk about in the near term, I didn't understand it as about to terminate a member's, uh, membership on board in this moment. Um, if I misunderstood that, please let me know. If we were to terminate a member, I'd, I'd like to talk about due process concerns and going through that for certain. Um, and ultimately, the board designate its own chair and vice chair typically. Um, if the board is not satisfied with its chair, I mean, it can deal with that, and I think it'd be best to let them govern in that manner, and if we feel that somebody is not fulfilling their obligations, we can revisit that, that discussion. I think it's prudent to raise the issue and say, I'd like this on the radar, um, as we have, um, we, by way of example, uh, I told you earlier in the night that I'd be circulating signed codes as I have a draft, that's something that will go before your planning and zoning board, ultimately, most likely, advise the manager of such, so those sorts of things would come forward. But I, I would say, uh, appropriate to raise it as a concern, I would not want to necessarily announce and make that decision this evening, and I don't think that's what was being proposed.
My recommendation is always to reach out to the person that is, if we're having an issue, I think before it ever comes to that, uh, that level of, uh, some sort of a course correction. Any other unfinished business? All right. Now we are on to council comments. This month, we're going to go in computer-generated random order. Except, um, now that we have a new Vice Mayor, she must go. Uh, so that being said, uh, Councilmember Notaro, you have the floor.
No comments.
Councilmember Roberts?
Congratulations, Jody, and Kyle. I bet you didn't think tonight, you came to this meeting, that this was going to happen. So congratulations to you.
That's correct.
You've done a great job. Yeah, I think, uh, just one thing about emergency management, um, our city does not have an emergency management director, nor should. We're not, we're not big enough for that. Pinellas County has a emergency management director, and those are the people we as the city should rely on every time. When we talk about information and videos that are available, 100% guaranteed, and I haven't even looked at it, I guarantee you their website of their emergency management would have all of that data and all of that information that we would ever need, and that's the way it should be set up. Those people are full-time emergency management people. Every day of the year, they have a large staff. That's what they do. We need to use them. They're a tremendous resource. Just want to make sure that that's where we go. We can't take on all of those responsibilities within our city, we're not big enough. We don't have the people, the manpower, or woman power to do that. So use the resources, use Pinellas County Emergency Management, and we would be much better off for that, guaranteed.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Now we're up to Councilmember Gunn.
The only thing I'd like to remember is that some of these issues, they were having a tough time deciding what the will of residents are, or whatever, maybe it's time to just put some of those stuff on the ballot, I don't know. And it's a legitimacy to the whole thing, and that's the will of people, that's the will of people, just to suggest that it costs more either. Maybe that's, that's, how to slice it fully enough.
Thank you. Now I'll work to Councilmember Baker.
Well, I recommended Mr. Reeffler back in March of this year, and by majority of the council decided to go forward with the search. And I further was the only one to vote for you, Kyle, when we narrowed the candidates down seven feet. After that city manager contract negotiations washed out, which I don't know how much money we've paid you, Mr. Moore, for negotiations and everything like that, two more times I recommended it by motion that we give this man a contract to move forward. I guess finally tonight, council's cut the side of the tree, saw the forest before having all the work he's done. Congratulations, well-deserved. I think you've been insulted in the last seven months by this council, and I, I feel bad for you and your family, but congratulations for tonight. Furthermore, this city, this scheme, under God's will, the category two or three hurricane, I hope to be all gave thanks to him, and so, that's all.
Member Baker, understanding you were making a rhetorical point, I just want to make it clear, attempting though it may have been, all of the negotiations were within the retainer. Because I enjoyed the process in progress, I did not think it appropriate to make it a special matter.
Thank you, uh, we could use your services on other things. Councilmember Zabel?
Yeah, congratulations to Councilman, uh, Shirley on that collection. Um, I'm truly humbled by some of the citizens' comments about the, uh, to our own working to, to support the council as a whole. And, uh, toward that, I've recommended counsel, we've never had a procedure like this before, where actually citizens' comments, I mean, I'm reaching out to 611 people out there, and they're coming back with race suggestions that have never been marked down. Um, what I've done is taken everyone, assigned them a, uh, to the strategic plan, and I'm going to place those in front of the council. So if you've got time, council members, please look at them. Those are basically about seven pages, over 35 items, uh, that the citizens felt strongly about, and they deserve to know what we're doing about those status and how we're going to move on in the future. But that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Now we are along to Vice Mayor Shirley.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for supporting me, um, very humbled by it, and I will continue to support the city and citizens. And, you know, Kyle, I didn't open this meeting up tonight, you know, thinking that my change in the agenda would bring you to negotiating, but I'm glad we're able to bring you help, because you look tired, and you look like you need help. So I'm thankful for everything you've done and, um, happy that that's how it turned out.
Thank you. I would, uh, like to thank all city staff members for their hard work, all prepared in the storm of the century. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Mike Zabel, and Frank Baker, and others who assisted with sandbags. It's easy to get caught up in the day-to-day drama on Nextdoor and Facebook, but in the end, we should realize that we are all neighbors, we should treat each other as such. Our situation could have made a severe turn for the worse. Thankfully, we were spared, and our beautiful community lives on. I'd like to congratulate interim city manager Reeffler. I hope that you're able to conclude agreement and serve us well. Uh, I would also like to thank Councilmember Gunn for his time as Vice Mayor, and I would also like to congratulate Vice Mayor Shirley for stepping up and, uh, and assuming that position. As always, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight and to those who are attending at home. With that being said, do I have a motion? What's your adjournment? Frank Baker? Seconded by Leslie Notaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good night, everyone.